All this meeting to order at six o'clock as City Council of Lafayette. And for the roll call, all city councils, the vice mayor and the mayor are here. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. So now we will go to public comment for the closed session item only. And what this comment is about, it's the conference with our legal staff on anticipated litigation. And we have to go into closed session for this item. And so if you have a comment on potential legal threats and how it relates to, you know, the item, we're going to discuss the actual fields later in the meeting and what we are going to do moving forward with the fields. This is only to brief the council on potential litigation that has been brought from, from whatever parties may be bringing litigation against us about the sports field. So if you have a comment for that, please fill out a speaker slip and hand it to Joanne Roberts over there in the blue shirt. All right. Do you have any public comment?
And Mayor, I might just give a brief oral staff report and then if there is public comment, we'll take that public comment. This closed session item is related to the attached letter from Mr. Betts, which I have determined is a threat of litigation that allows us to go into closed session. The letter is in the staff report and relates to a potential decision from, at that time, it was the Parks, Trails and Recreation Commission's decision to remove an existing grass field at Buckeye Fields and replace it with a 70 by 30 infill mix. And that is it. We'll be going into closed session if we don't have any public comments on the litigation matter.
Okay.
Okay, CJ, can you make me the co-host, please? Alrighty, thank you. Okay. Mayor Candell, I have one person's in the Don Katzen Community Hall who would like to speak on the closed session items.
Sounds great.
And any persons in our Zoom audience, if you want to speak on the closed session item only, please raise your hand now so I don't miss you because this can go quickly. Our first speaker here is Rachel Leonard.
Good evening, members of the council, Mayor Candell, Vice Mayor Anderey, and everyone here in the audience. Thank you so much for being here. I just want to comment very briefly on the closed session agenda item. In connection with the closed session related to Lafayette Little League's threat of litigation, I want to make one brief point. Lafayette Little League's historic investments into Buckeye Complex does not give it a legally protectable right or interest in the city's fields. There appear to be at least some members of this community who believe the opposite is true, when in fact, the public comments from a former Lafayette Little Board, Lafayette Little League board member, Rand Crichton, revealed that Lafayette Little League expressly waived its right to even assert any interest in the city's fields in exchange for $1 million in grant money from the state of California and $300,000 from the city of Lafayette that was used to improve Buckeye Fields. Mr. Crichton's public comment email sent on October 21st states as follows. As part of the consideration for obtaining the money from both the state and the city of Lafayette, Lafayette Little League gave up any right to contend that it had a proprietary interest in the fields. The point being this, Lafayette Little League has no legally protectable right or interest in the city's fields that could serve as a basis for an injunction and there is no legal basis for any such lawsuit. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Candell, we have no additional speakers at this time.
Okay. All right, you guys. So thank you guys. Oh, you did, did you write the wrong item? Is this on the litigation? Around the actual lawsuit or about the decision? All right, thank you. All right, then we will go to closed session. We'll be back at seven o'clock. Thank you.
Get in the room, please. I need quiet. Philippe, in the back, are we ready to go? Is it 7:00 PM?
Yes, we can get started.
Great, thank you, bringing the city council meeting back to order. Just, this is outstanding. I just want to say, you know, when Lafayette shows up, Lafayette shows up. Thank you all. Just to give you an idea of the meeting, is that we do have a couple of items before the Buckeye Fields event. And so, and at the beginning of that, because I see a bunch of little kids in the room, I'll take like 20 minutes of public comment from the littlest ones. And so if you can take this time during these other presentations to kind of pick a spokesman or two or three to represent the little ones in here, I'll give 20 minutes before we even talk about the topic. And then the youngest ones can go home. So, all that said, first off is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
What's that? Oh, and we have nothing to report from the closed session. All right, so do we have any public comments for items not on the agenda?
Mayor Candell, I have no speaker slips for persons in the Don Taxon Community Hall, and I have no persons in our virtual audience with their hands raised, so you're free to move on.
Thank you. Should we do this another night? Probably do this another night. Yes, okay, thank you. All right. We'll have the City Manager's update.
Mayor, I have nothing to report this evening under this item.
Appreciate that. Second motion, before the presentation start, I do have a request to move Item 17B up in the agenda is for the Rosa Parks Resolution.
I mean, 17A?
17A, if we can move 17A up until after Chief Bachman's presentation. So can I have a motion on that?
I saw moved to move 17A after Chief Bachman.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, so we will go to, first off, we have Greg Wolfe, Planning Director, introduction of Senior Engineer Lori Sukgang.
Mayor, Councilmembers, members of the public and the community, I have the pleasure of introducing Lori Sukgang. She has over 24 years of, is Lori in the room? Terrific. Go ahead and come up to the lectern if you would. Over 24 years of municipal engineering experience, having worked in the public sector her entire career with agencies such as Contra Costa County, the town of Maraga, and the city of Dublin. Lori enjoys being outdoors and especially looks forward to working on trail, bike sidewalk, bike lane improvements to enhance multimodal connectivity. Lori grew up in the Bay Area and lives in Walnut Creek. In her spare time, she enjoys hiking, biking, traveling, and gardening. And right before starting with Lafayette, Lori spent some time exploring Crater Lake and the many waterfalls in the Umpqua National Forest in Oregon. So we welcome Lori. I know that the entire engineering team is incredibly excited to have her on board with her great experience, and so welcome Lori.
Yes, thank you. You can feel free to say something if you'd like.
Sure. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council, Lori Sukgang. Just wanted to say it that way. I know it's difficult to pronounce Sukgang is how I say it. Thank you, Greg, for the introduction. I'm honored to be here and to join the Lafayette team, Public Works Department Engineering, and just ready to hit the ground running.
Thank you, welcome. Thank you so much for coming to work for us.
Well, for the benefit of everyone, this is a really big deal.
Yes.
That she has joined us. This is fantastic news, so.
Very senior engineer joining our teams. Yes. All right, thank you. We have the pleasure right now of welcoming Assistant Chief Chris Bachman from the Contra Costa Fire Protection District, and an update from the Contra Costa Fire Protection District for Lafayette. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Candell, Councilmembers, members of the public, city staff. So as some of you know, this is roughly a six-month update to provide information of what Contra Costa County Fire has done over the last six months and answer any questions you may have after the presentation. So the Rodeo Hercules Fire Protection District, we did an annexation on July 1. That now puts our total fire stations as part of CON FIRE to 37. So the Rodeo Hercules Fire Protection District, we did an annexation on July 1. That now puts our total fire stations as part of CONFIRE to 37. We have one reserve station, now a wildland center, 41 fire companies, over 670 firefighters and professional staff, and our district is now 582 square miles. So over July 4th, it's usually always a really busy time for us as you look at the number of calls that we run over 4th of July. In 2024, the total calls by our dispatch was 1,100. It was 9:23 in 2025, and total dispatch incidents was 317 to 271 in 2025. And then total fire calls that we went on, went on during that 24-hour period was 129 and 83. And I think one of the most impressive is when you look at Lafayette in both those years for both exterior vegetation and structure fires. On July 24th, we do not have a problem in Lafayette. They listened to our messaging about not doing fireworks, how dangerous fireworks are, and the number of fires that occur throughout our county. But I'm pleased to report that Lafayette did not have any incidents that we responded to both last year or this year. Copter 1 is in service from June 1 to July 31. It's responded to 23 fires. It's dropped 183 water drops, which is approximately 55,000 gallons of water. It is staffed by one pilot and a Contra Costa County fire member, and they are staffed out at our Byron Wildland Center. Significant incidents that have occurred in Lafayette with vegetation. From January to September, we have had 13 exterior fires, only burning 0.78 acres. That number, of course, went up. I had to include a picture. Thank you, Mayor Candell, for providing that picture. It did occur on October 3rd, which is just out of the reporting period for this report, but it was worth noting that was a one-alarm vegetation fire near Pleasant Hill Road and Green Valley Drive. Copter 1 actually was in the area because it had responded to another incident. A lot of questions was how did it get there so quick? Through multiple drops, within 15 minutes, forward progress was stopped, and we were in mop-up. So, but the numbers, you know, are, are still very small, and we attribute that to both our staff and the resources that we have available to respond. As far as residential structure fires in Lafayette, in 2025, so far, we've had six working residential structure fires. I went ahead and pulled the details to provide the addresses and dates of when those fires have occurred. Most of them have been, we'll say, smaller fires where they haven't went second alarm or, or major devastation. So I did have to pull a picture from last year where we had a total loss from a structure, and that was on Monroe Avenue in 2024. And in 2024, at that time, we had had three working residential structure fires for that year. So total calls of service, this is kind of a heat map showing where the calls that we run are from January to September. Roughly 1,500 calls during that nine-month period. And the other good, the other common theme we see throughout our jurisdiction is usually we see our numbers really increase in the June, July, August timeframe because of vegetation fires. We're not seeing that in, in Lafayette. We do have some, but we don't see that huge spike that we do in other portions of our jurisdiction. So when we break down that call type from January to September, this is what we see, very similar to last year. And for those in the audience that are not familiar with this, so hazardous conditions is the hazmat team, but we do have a hazmat team response at one of our stations in Lafayette. So that's why anywhere in the county that they're running on a hazardous material call, that engine's getting dispatched. So Lafayette does have an anomaly where they see a higher number that's reported for hazardous condition response. It's not necessarily occurring in Lafayette, but it is an increase in response from that engine. The other one is vehicle accidents. A lot of those are happening on the 24 and 680 corridor, again, because of the proximity to the fire stations on 24 and the 680 interchange. Using your vehicle accident numbers are a little higher than some of our other cities. They are always joined by Engine 1 and Ladder 1 out of Lafayette, again, because of their proximity to both 680 and 24. Wildfire preparedness. Some of our California's largest wildfires have started in the fall months. Want to make sure that everybody stays prepared. This QR code will take you to a, to our Preparedness and Evacuation Guide. I know La Miranda also has an evacuation guide very similar to this one, but this QR code will take you to that wildfire preparedness guide as you stay prepared for wildfires and potential evacuations if necessary. Something new that we are expanding is, we'll say, mapping a fuel break. So wildfire mitigation that we've been doing throughout the county has been going on now three and a half years. It's all funded through Measure X, in addition to the CAL FIRE Prevention Grant that we have for the Lafayette Walnut Creek Shaded Fuel Break. But all the mitigation that we're doing, we originally started just with dropping pins, identifying a map saying this is where we're doing the work throughout the county. Then we thought it was, it would be ideal for, for our purposes, for the first responders and on the engine company, to identify where we put these fuel breaks in around the county. So as they respond in, it's kind of like called the anchor point. We know that this is an area that has kind of some expanded defensible space behind the homes, that it's going to be a little easier to do structural protection. So when we have these fuel breaks, we were identifying what was the funding source, when was it completed, and what was the total acres. And the original yellow is what that fuel break would look like on our mapping system. We only did this for internal purposes, and we kind of called it pre-planning. We were pre-planning the identification of where we've completed all of our fuel breaks throughout the county. We've then learned, so we followed this lead of, of CAL FIRE. They're doing it, the similar thing at the state level. It's called CAL Mapper. In conversations with them, they said insurance companies have actually reached out to CAL FIRE and said, can you update your fuel breaks to identify the type of mitigation that's been performed, along with how did you dispose of the vegetation, and when was the last time it was maintained? Because insurance companies are now committing, as they're getting more detailed in their catastrophic fuel modeling models, to say these fuel breaks do make a difference, and they want to incorporate that when they're doing their fuel modeling. So we're following their lead. We're going to also now identify what type of mitigation was performed and getting that list of what they're looking for. Some of that list includes, is it mastication, living and thinning, goat grazing, mowing and disking? And then how did you dispose of that vegetation? Did you ship and broadcast? Did you haul off? Did you pile burn it? Did you lop and scatter it? Probably the easiest one I like to use as an example is goat grazing. So we know for goat grazing an area, the goats are going to consume all of that vegetation that's been knocked down or, or mowed down. If you're doing mowing, it's, unless you're going back and raking it, you're taking it from a standing of two or three feet tall and knocking it down and chopping it up. But that vegetation and fuel load is still on the ground. It's just not as hazardous because it's more dense and it's on the ground, but it still will burn versus if you did goat grazing. So they have different values, and that's why the insurance companies say they not only want to know when was it performed, when was it maintained, what type of mitigation was performed, but what, what did you do with that vegetation when you mitigated it? So we are going to start tracking that, uploading that into data sets that the insurance companies are looking at in hopes that it will help the fuel models for our residents throughout the county as they're, these catastrophic models are being done by insurance companies. And last, I was asked, what are some of the lessons learned from the LA wildfires? When I gave my last update, I had reported out that I did respond to the Palisades fire in January. I was there for 12 days, and I was really involved in, we'll say, the repopulation and the, and dealing with the residents, the 28,000 residents that were currently evacuated when I arrived. So since then, I really want to stick to the reports. And those reports are LA County has done an after-action report, and there's four different reports that, that are out there. On my last slide, I actually have a QR code with a Google folder, and all these reports are available in it. But I'm just going to give some highlights tonight. So with that, they go over four different topics. It's, it's alerts, warnings, and evacuation highlights. There's alerts, warnings, and evacuations, and issues they had at the Eaton Fire, the notification systems, and evacuation policies, and the summary of the actions that LA County has already taken from these lessons learned. So kind of a highlight level, the five areas that they identified that they felt that they needed to look at was policies, protocols, standard operation, standard operating procedures, and authority. It identified that it was their policies were outdated. It conflicted with who had the authority to do evacuations and what platforms they were using. I saw this as I was there because they're using Genesis. Unfortunately, they had just implemented Genesis in December of that year. A lot of residents weren't familiar with what zone they were in or the Genesis platform. That's not the case in Contra Costa County. We've been using Genesis for over three years. We've really been getting the message out there to make sure everybody knows their zone, along with then they need to sign up for the community warning system, which is how they're going to get alerted. The next was about training, planning, and coordination. They identified they needed to develop evacuation strategies and staffing guidelines. These evacuation strategies were just really developed and were still in process of being implemented as they'd set up all their different zones through Genesis, along with how were they going to staff the EOC, along with getting those messages out, who was going to do it, and who was going to maintain that over a long period of time. The next was resource management. It was, it was a very large, complex incident. The size exceeded their operational area for resources. They typically rely on that county and the neighboring counties to say, in a big incident, as we start needing resources, they, they call them in. They did respond, but in an incident that size, it even overwhelmed that agency, along with their op, they call it their op area. One thing that we've implemented in the Bay Area is what we call the Nine Area, Nine Bay Area County Operational Response Area. That is an agreement that we have with our nine Bay Area counties that if any of those nine counties are dealt with a, a fire that's putting residents, home structures in immediate danger, they can start calling us, and we respond immediately with, with apparatus and personnel. So there is no delay. We're not going through the statewide mutual aid system. That's how it's, it's identified and set up that we would respond 24 hours into the incident or once the incident gets set up in a formal incident command system. But that assures us that not only are we well protected with additional resources, but that our, that our neighboring departments are. We've experienced this when fires have occurred early on in Vacaville, Napa, mostly to the north. We immediately will launch resources when requested, knowing that we have that same resource ability that's going to assist us when we start identifying that we need 50 fire engines to respond immediately, that we're going to be able to get those from the nine Bay Area counties. As far as situational awareness and interoperability, need to make sure that they had streamlined tools to monitor live events. We currently have that by, in our, in our apparatus. We're using a resource management tool and how we're, how we're getting dispatched and how we're getting there and the updates through a software platform called Tabit Command. We also use the Genesis platform, CWS. We're informing residents to make sure that they're watching Alert California. That's the, the live camera systems that are identifying how big the fire is. And another one is Watch Duty. Watch Duty is becoming very popular, and it's providing live updates as well. A lot of these platforms are realizing the importance of providing that live situational awareness to residents and not just relying on social media or emergency alerts going out, that there's different avenues that you're going to be able to get that information. We're, we're always encouraging residents to make sure they're signing up and aware of those platforms because it's platforms that we're monitoring, along with updating to have, so the residents have the most accurate and updated information in a very timely manner. The last is community engagement and public education. They identified they need to improve their public outreach and build collaboration. We feel we've been doing that. There's always room for improvement. Our last big event we just had was our open house. We had a record number of 1,550 people attend that four-hour event where we showcased all our wildland equipment, along with special rescue equipment. And to end, here is the QR code that'll take you to a Google folder that has not only all of our evacuation information that you can download, along with those four reports for lessons learned from a crystal who was a third party who did that after-action review of the LA fires. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. And just to let all of you guys know, Lafayette's policy platform puts wildfire safety as our number one concern right now, which is why it's so important that we get our amazing chief, Assistant Chief Bachman in here to give us updates on what he's doing and what he's moving on, you know, looking, how he's looking out for us and how we can even do it better. So thank you, Chief Bachman. Does anybody have any questions? Either one.
Sure. Well, thank you very much for the report and the, the lessons learned. I, I will dig into the, the reports because I'm sure there were lots, plenty of details in that. I did have a question, though, not related to your presentation generally, but there was a, a picture or an article on the front page of the La Miranda Weekly about the helipod that has, that is being installed, kind of where Terrace is, the, the intersection of Pleasant Hill Road and Highway 24. Is that happening? I'm not, I'm not clear on that.
So we only have, we have two currently installed. One is at the Sheriff's Department off, on Sheriff's Department land out of, off of Marsh Creek, and the other one is out on Byron Wildfire Center. We have four other, I'm sorry, and Phillips 66 out in Rodeo Hercules. So we actually have three. We have three other identified locations. We would like to install them, that I believe is one of them.
Okay.
But we're also, we have to work through the legalities of getting the approval from the landowner, along with how are we going to supply water to it? Because these helipods, they aren't designed that they always store water. So we have to manually go on, we go onto the site, open the valve, fill the helipod up with water, and then it will maintain that pod being full for water drops. So we do have the funding and approval to install six throughout the county, of which we have installed, installed three so far. And I believe that funding was just approved in late spring. So it's, it's not, not surprising that we only have half of ours being done, but we will get those other three installed throughout the next six months.
Okay. So your plan is it will happen then? Okay. It was a little unclear, I think.
Again, I can't guarantee it will happen at that location, but we have strategically identified six locations throughout the county, and I know Lafayette was identified as a potential site that we did want a helipod.
Great. Well, anything we can do to help make, facilitate that, I'm sure we'd all be happy about that. Thank you.
Yeah. I had a question on that helipod site because I could see from my house, the Chopper 1 dropping water on the fire on Pleasant Hill Road, and was just amazed by how quickly your team responded to that fire. It knocked it down very quickly. So kudos to CONFIRE on that. I have to say that for everyone here, CONFIRE has been a great partner for the city of Lafayette. Chief Bachman comes to the Emergency Preparatives Commission meeting every three or four months or so. I expect we'll hear a briefing sort of like this at the next session. But it's a partnership where we rely on CONFIRE for the fire safety issues, and our job is to try to get, make citizens aware through FireWise and other programs. And you, you, your staff has done a great job of supporting that. Now, one question I had was that, I thought the mapping fuel breaks information you have is really interesting. Is that, that available to the public, or is it really just internal and for the insurance companies? I'm kind of curious about that.
So it's going to be both. We're doing it in, in phases. The, one of the data sets that we have to upload needs to be uploaded by October 31. So we're focusing our efforts on getting the, all the information that's been done, all the fuel breaks that have been done in the last year to get into that one reporting system. Now, it's not the only reporting system, but it's one of the ones that we will be reporting to that has a deadline of October 31. So once we get that done, then we're going to continue to collaborate with CAL FIRE on confirming that list of what the insurance companies are wanting with their data set, correct that model, and then we'll have it done on, on our end. So everything is built on the backend, other than those additional data set pieces, which, which is just added in the dropdown. Then we'll make that both available on our website, along with uploading that to any organization that's willing to take it and then share it with insurance companies. But we will have it on our website. I imagine it's probably a couple of months out. But yes, that's the goal, is to be very transparent with where they've all been completed at, along with encouraging the maintenance. Because as we go in and do these fuel breaks, we always tell the, the HOAs, the FireWise communities, or the landowners that we're doing this work on, we're doing it to catch your property up, to get it where it should be. But we can't come back every single year and do this fuel break. It's going to be your responsibility to maintain it. Knowing that now there's a big incentive, as insurance companies, they recognize the importance of maintaining them. And what they're saying is, on year two, it's still worth some value, but it's not worth as much as it was on year one, unless you went back and maintained it. So if you take a fuel break and we clean up the property and create that fuel break around an HOA, and then three years later, it's never been touched, it's going to lose a percentage of value every year in their fuel model. But if you maintain it every year, it's going to keep that full value that they're that full value that they're recognizing it was on year one. So we look at this as a win-win because it's not only showing all the work we've done, but we'll be able to go back and document annually, how well have they been maintained and encourage the HOAs, the Firewise communities and the landowners to maintain these fuel breaks, because it will be a benefit to their insurance fuel modeling.
Yeah. And I think that would be critical so that we're aware of what needs to be done to maintain these. Anything that can help an insurance company decide to be active in Lafayette again would be a win for everybody. So that is much appreciated. And maybe my last question is, with the McChrystal report on the LA fires, is there, how is Confire approaching that? Are you kind of gaming out like lessons learned from LA and adapting Confire's approach? Or are you, what's the, what are the next steps in Contra Costa County for that, based on that report?
So yes, we, we are looking at that, along with currently the CWS system is also being evaluated and we're bringing, or the county has decided to bring in a third party reviewer to evaluate that alerting system. Because that McChrystal report does focus on evacuations, alerts and notifications. So when we're out, you know, at an incident, our job is to identify what resources we need, put those resources in place, and then identify, do we need to evacuate a certain area? And if we do, we, we're in a unified command, we'll meet up with local law enforcement. If CalFire is there, they're in that unified command as well, and identify what area we need to, or zone we need to evacuate. Once we make that decision, then that alert goes to CWS, they push it out to the community, but then law enforcement acts on that evacuation. So there's multi, there's multiple approaches and multiple agencies that are involved in that whole process. So the, the report is fascinating. And the full report's like 170 pages. There's also a, you know, the highlight and executive overview, which I think is four or five pages. But yes, we're absolutely looking at that, evaluating those areas and comparing some of those because they're using the same system with Genesis, although they were using Genesis also as their alerting tool. We do not. But that also means we need to be evaluating our alerting tool with CWS to see, does it have any of those efficiencies that were called out in that report?
Good. Yeah. Thank you very much, Assistant Chief Bachman. This was a very helpful report and thank you for your service. I have a question with respect to the Pleasant Hill Road wildfire. Do you know the cause? Are you able to share that with us?
It's still currently under investigation. I, I will say that we know it started near a power pole, but that doesn't always mean that it was from the power company. Sometimes we see that when fires are intentionally set, they do that as a distractor, that they light the fire at the base of a power pole, thinking that it's the easy blame. So we have to work with the utility company to get that report to see, did any surge or malfunction occur at that pole, which we're in the process of doing. So we're identifying, we know the, we'll say the area of origin, but the actual cause is still under investigation until we're able to eliminate whether or not there was any type of surge in power that could have sparked.
Okay. Thank you very much.
One last one. So we're part of a regional roundtable with Senator Grayson. And Senator Grayson has come out for a, a regional ask for funding from the state. And so you've been working on that. When can we expect to hear back from you? Because he put the December 1st deadline. Are you going to bring it back to us before that date?
Yeah, there, his staff has already reached out to our chief officer team that's involved in that and kind of put some deadline dates in November of when we need to provide some topics to gain the buy-in of the other partners that were there. So we're in that unified voice, you were at that meeting, that in the unified voice of this is what we're requesting, these are our top priorities, and here's the dollar amount we think we could receive assistance.
Excellent. Thank you.
So yeah, she will have an update as that, those dates approach in November.
Fabulous. Thank you. All right. Any public comment?
Mayor Candell, I have no speakers in the community hall, but I have one hand raised from our virtual audience, and that is Robert Lavoy. Mr. Lavoy, you may speak.
Hi, thank you. I just had a quick question for the chief. Looking at those numbers on the fire, the residential fires, it seemed like there was a dramatic increase. And I was wondering if he had any thoughts on the, the source of the ignition? Is there something going on recently that's, that's changed? Or is it just an unusual spike? So anyway, thank you.
So I did, when I pulled the report, we, we always look at, well, I look at two things. Did any of them make a significant incident? Meaning, was it a, a full alarm or did it go to a second alarm like the previous year, where you're seeing a total loss in the structure? Most of them were very minor. In fact, I couldn't even find any pictures from our investigators, from the PIO staff that on any of those six fires, which tells me that they were all probably smaller, still significant incident if that occurs in your home, but not a major loss or impact to the neighborhood. So I didn't have the details on it, other than I wasn't able to locate any pictures which would identify that it was a large incident for us that would have, that we would have been involved in for several hours. If, if the city council would, would like a report back on those details, I could pull them. But I think that based on the, the lack of publicity that we have, we have policies in place that identify certain benchmarks that we require a public information officer to respond, take pictures, provide updates on social media, along with then to city staff and the city manager of the incident. So they stay informed when fires are occurring in their community. And none of those rose to the level of what we call a significant incident. Now, that doesn't mean it wasn't significant to the resident of those homes. I'm sure it was. But it didn't meet those benchmarks where it was, in our terms, a major fire.
No need to respond any more than that. Thank you. Any other questions? No. Thank you so much, Chief Bachman. Thank you for coming and great report.
Yes. And I would like to add, I will be back sometime in the next month or two because we're doing the fire code update. Every three years, the California fire code needs updated. This year, there's a new code coming out called the Wildland Urban Interface Code. That's where you deal with the 7A construction type. If you're going to build in the very high fire hazard severity zone, or even the high with new construction. So they moved those regulations out of the residential code into the WUI code. So I'll be providing an update in the next month or two on our ordinance adoption. So we're in line with adopting the new fire code update, along with the WUI code and any modifications that goes with that. But you'll receive a full report along with a presentation at the next meeting when we present that.
Thank you. All right. All right. So just for everybody, I expect these next couple of items probably take 20 minutes to a half an hour. Would that be Joanne's guess too? If you want to go out of the room and relax, you can. And we'll almost, we'll give you lots of warning before we start your item. All right. So we're going to go on to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to adopt the consent calendar?
So moved.
Oh, Chief Bach, oh, right, right. We said we would come back to item 17A, Rosa Parks, right after Chief Bachman's. So if we can go to 17A. Um, so we have a resolution for the Rosa Parks. If we could keep it quiet as people go outside, we're trying to get our business done quickly and get to your item. Thank you. We have a request for a resolution for Rosa Parks. This is going to be tough. And a proclamation. And we do have somebody here to talk about it.
Good evening.
Evening.
I'm Teresa Lucido. I'm the Regent for the Akalani's Chapter, National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution, and a proud Lafayette resident since 1992. I want to thank you, Mayor Candell and the Lafayette City Council. On behalf of the Akalani's Chapter, DAR, I'm honored to accept this proclamation, recognizing December 1st as Rosa Parks Day. Really pleased about this. Seventy years ago, Mrs. Parks' quiet act of courage on Montgomery Alabama bus became a turning point in American history. It's a reminder of the pursuit of liberty and equality. And it didn't end with the American Revolution, but it continues to this day with every generation. Our chapter is dedicated to honoring all those who have advanced the ideals of freedom and justice set forth in our nation's founding. We're grateful to you and the city of Lafayette, joining, joining us in celebrating Rosa Parks' legacy and inspiring citizens, both young and old, to stand up or to sit down for doing what's right. Thank you for this meaningful recognition.
Of course. Thank you so much. I have the proclamation to give to you right here. Oh, we have to adopt it first. Hang on. Let's adopt it first. All right. Do I have a motion to adopt the proclamation recognized in December 1st as Rosa Parks Day, illuminating our path to civil rights?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I didn't think that was going to be.
Right.
All right. Now we will go on to the consent calendar. Do we have anybody who wants to remove anything from consent? Anyone in the audience who wants to remove anything from the consent calendar?
Mayor, I have no requests.
Oh, you do. Go ahead.
I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Thank you. All right. Next, we're going to go to staff reports with Jenny Rosen and the Public Art Committee.
Good evening. Mayor, Vice Mayors, City Council members, thank you for inviting, let me just start this way. Closer to them. I prepared a two-minute statement that I just thought I would read. We're keenly aware of your time constraints or expectations this evening. So I'm just going to go ahead and read this and then introduce the artist. Thank you for inviting the Public Art Committee to prevent the, to present the proposed public artwork for 950 Huff Avenue, created by local artist and Lafayette resident Clay Jensen. This project fulfills the public art requirement associated with the site's development and represents a collaboration between the artist, the project team and city staff. The Public Art Committee has reviewed the proposal and unanimously recommends approval, so the artist may proceed with fabrication and installation. Clay Jensen is Professor Emeritus from the California College of the Arts and an accomplished sculptor with decades of experience in numerous public art commissions throughout the Bay Area and beyond, including projects for the cities of Berkeley, San Leandro, Walnut Creek, Santa Rosa and Santa Clara. His work is known for its strong formal presence, refined craftsmanship and sensitivity to site and community context. For the 950 Huff site, he has designed a bronze work titled Binary Wall Datum Line, consisting of three cast bronze panels, each 80 inches tall, with varying widths from 18 to 36 inches, that echo the rectilinear design of the building's facade. The artwork complements the existing public art collection while offering distinct imagery and concept. It is intended to enhance the aesthetic quality of the 950 Huff Avenue development and contribute to the broader cultural landscape of Lafayette. So now that I've introduced the project, I'm going to turn it over to Clay, who's just going to say a few words about the work that he prepared.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to read a, just a brief statement. My sculpture in daylight and illuminated nightlight will activate and energize the minimal restrictive site allotted for the sculpture. The sculpture reflects the relationship of positive and negative spaces, opening and closing. The textured vertical panels reference geological layering, measurement of height, depth and area. The surfaces will be in a constant state of change daily, seasonally interacting with sun, rain and shadows. Human interaction is to contemplate seasons, time and space, topography and landscape. The bronze panels will be fastened to a concrete footing with stainless steel brackets and stainless steel hardware. This creates a strong and durable environment with minimal maintenance. The sculpture will be surrounded with landscaping and illuminated at night with LED lighting.
So we have a few Public Art Committee members with us here tonight too, and any one of us would be happy to answer any of your questions or address your comments.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you very much. I just have a question. You, you mentioned something about integrating with the light, the lighting and the landscaping around. What, is it just going to be simply lit at night? Or is there anything you're doing with the lights to, to?
Simply lit.
Simply lit, okay.
From, from ground up.
Any other questions? Okay. Any public comments?
Mayor Candell, I have no speakers in the Don Tatsom Community Hall, but I may have Robert Lavoy. Your hand is still raised. Do you want to speak on this item? I will allow you to speak.
Yes, thank you. I just had a quick question on the topography on the plates. Is that something from Lafayette's topography or just random pattern or some other site? Thank you.
In general. So not specifically Lafayette, but in general, California landscape.
Okay. Thank you. Any other public? All right. Close public comment. Any other questions or comments? Go ahead.
Okay. Well, I will move approval of the public art proposal for Binary Wall Datum Line by Clay Jensen for the Blue Oak Project at 950 Huff Avenue. And I will just thank Jenny and the Public Art Committee for all their work on this. This is a great outcome. I also want to thank the developers, Brian Griggs, Jeff Stone, for helping us get to this outcome. This is very, very positive. It's going to be a great addition to artwork, public artwork in the city. So thanks to everyone for all your work on this.
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Great. And now we have one more.
Right. Another two-minute prepared statement. Again, I thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor and City Council members for inviting us to discuss another somewhat more difficult topic. We're requesting approximately $135,000 to close the final funding gap for dandelion seeds, the signature artwork at the heart of the public plaza that is part of the Lafayette Town Center Pathway and Bart Station project. This shortfall isn't the result of mismanagement, it's the result of building code updates and economic changes that have occurred over the past six years. The project has been years in the making and to date, the city has already invested $72,000 in dandelion seeds. Walking away now would mean losing that investment and the integrity of a project built on community vision and collaboration. It's also critical that the artwork be installed now during the town center, Lafayette Town Center Pathway and Bike, Bark, Art Bike Station construction. The electrical and foundation work for the piece is already being built into that project. If we delay the art installation, we risk damaging new infrastructure and driving costs even higher later. Integrating it now is the most cost-effective option. The plaza was designed around dandelion seeds as its centerpiece, an iconic work meant to serve as the grand entrance to our city. Without it, the project's impact and purpose would be significantly diminished. The Public Art Committee respectfully, respectfully asked the council to honor the original vision and protect the city's investment by funding the completion of dandelion seeds as designed, ensuring it stands as the welcoming and inspiring symbol it was always meant to be. Let's complete this project as intended, responsibly, efficiently, and with a way that reflects Lafayette's commitment to art, community and thoughtful investment in our public spaces. The artists are here with me this evening, David Cole and Michael Brown of Kinematic Slab. And before we answer your questions or move into discussion, I'm going to ask them to show you a little video of the work, to bring it to life. I remember that. So this is one of the dandelion seeds in motion. It's a prototype. They've all So this is one of the dandelion seeds in motion. It's a prototype they've already created and brought to the library to- I wanted you-
I remember when it was here. That was fun.
So the each dandelion seed is about six feet in diameter and suspended by a cable network about 30 feet above the ground in the turnaround in the plaza. There'll be 15 of these seeds suspended.
All right. So we're happy. Again, I have more Public Art Committee members here. I don't believe any of whom were on the committee at the time of its original approval, but the artists are here and I'm here to try to answer any questions you have.
All right, thank you. Do you have any questions? Okay, John?
Thank you. I guess, so looking at the numbers, I guess I'm understanding that our, the overage is primarily due to the thicker poles supporting the structure to handle the different building codes there and here now, and that we don't want the swaying that would be, would do. I'm confused, though, why the contingency, so I guess that's $40,000 for the cost, incremental costs, right? So it's not just, that's not, because presumably there's costs already for the poles, and this is just incremental. Now, I'm confused, though, why the additional cost also includes a contingency fund of $25,000, which is 10% of the whole project. So you're not asking for contingency just for the poles, even though you say the poles are the thing that's causing, that went over. So wasn't their contingency built in the original-
So the budget went up for a number of reasons. Yes, in part to the code. The building code changed during the time this project was approved before COVID. Then we were hit with COVID. There was a five-year delay in large part due to COVID. So there's been an increase in terms of inflation for the costs across the board for the entire project, from the artist's time to the materials, to the labor, to everything involved, the engineering. All of that has gone up. And I broke that down in the staff report with inflation numbers across those years. The contingency that's added there was added by the engineering department. So I got my numbers from engineering, because they're the ones handling the pole construction and sourcing the materials and sourcing the fabrication. And it's their policy to build in a contingency, and so that was the number I was given to cover that.
Okay, just feels like there's probably already a contingency with the whole project when it was originally. There wasn't? Okay, well, that's disappointing. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Any questions? Okay, do we have any public comment?
Mayor Candell, you have no persons in the Don Tatsin Community Hall, and I see no hands raised at this time.
Okay, closed public comment. All right, so any- Go ahead.
Okay, I move that we allocate $134,000-
One second. I think Jim has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just a public comment.
If I could.
Yeah.
Well, you can, the comment can come on the-
It can. He can make the motion if he wants.
Okay.
Okay.
We're not gonna have discussion on this? We are.
Oh, yeah, yeah, after the motion.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't mean to cut anything off. I just wanna move things along. So I move we allocate $134,892.12 from the general fund to complete the installation of the dandelion seeds.
All right, now we'll go to more discussion. Go ahead.
Thank you. And I appreciate that part of this time today was dealing with BART. And even though the trains may run reasonably well, sometimes with my projects, you can't quite say the same thing. The concern I had was basically the $135,000, give or take, you know, which is gonna have to come from the general fund. So a quick check I made was like, we have a reserve. Are we, the question I had for the finance department was, are we above our reserve threshold? By policy, we maintain a certain threshold where, and based on their feedback, my understanding is we are. So that gave me some comfort here that we could dip into the general fund for this. Otherwise, the whole thing unwinds, is my take on it. And all the six years of effort and the money we put in just goes away. So I support the motion and just wanted to say that I think in this case, we can handle it on the general fund from what I've been able to discern.
Thank you. Excellent.
Yeah, this is my concern also, and I guess I'm feeling a little bit uncertain about the numbers. And I wish that we had our finance director here so we could ask the questions in the public forum. You know, I'm thinking back to June when there was the budget presentation, and there were some asks that various parties had put in for additional funding. And some things were set aside in mind that there was potentially, we didn't know what the revenues would be for Measure H. And I haven't heard any update on that, and so that makes me hesitate on this allocation.
I agree. I'm actually a little concerned as well, because not that it's not a worthwhile use. I understand why. I understand the justification, because we sunk costs, we're already into it. But, you know, we're not being asked to like weigh this against anything else, including some things we're gonna hear later on tonight. And so I have to admit, I am a little concerned about that, that it's just kind of in a vacuum without anything, anything surrounding it. I can, I can support it. I'm just, it just feels a little odd coming just by itself without the further context. You know, we had long conversations about how we're using every extra dollar and said no to some kind of tough things.
Right.
You know, and now we're saying yes to this, which is, I think, probably greater than the entire sum of the things we said no to during the budget discussions.
That's very fair. So this is part of a very large project that we have a great partnership with BART on. And it's creating this big walkway, formal walkway, from BART to our downtown. And this started ages ago. I just remember. And it went through, and it was approved at that time, but then, yes, it just got 100% delayed. And finally, BART is saying that they can actually fund this project. So that part will go through. That's my understanding, right? Okay, it's just this piece of art that is the last thing that Lafayette is being asked to contribute to. And that's what's being deliberated tonight. And so I've got two people kind of on the fence, two people not on the fence.
Just to follow up, so could we bring this back? Get, get the input from the finance director and hear this at a future meeting? What's the timeline on, on the construction?
Is that possible?
I believe that last city council meeting, you approved the bid for the contract to do the work. The Matt Lethrap, I can speak to him tomorrow and ask him when they anticipate beginning construction. I did have conversations with him discussing whether there would be any way that we could delay the installation. And that's just not feasible financially, because the project is covered under the construction to build in the infrastructure that's all under the ground for this big project. And so that will be going on at the time of construction. I don't know when exactly construction is set to begin. I could find that out.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a little bit of background for members of the public. The mayor mentioned that our top priority, the council set three main priorities for this year. The first one was wildfire mitigation prevention. Second was implementing the housing element and all the things that are involved with that. And the third is evaluating our fiscal situation. And so the entire council thanks all of our residents for passing Measure H, because that puts us in a great position. But the council decided that this fiscal year, rather than fund any new projects, we would wait to see how much money actually comes in on Measure H on the half-cent sales tax, because we don't have the precise numbers yet. And we would also, we've commissioned a study of all of our assets, including fields, including parking lots, and how much it would cost over 20 years to maintain and/or replace those fields. Because if that number, we don't have that built into our budget. Once we get that report and we look at it, we'll decide whether we are going to establish sinking funds and start putting money aside for all of those things to replace them. So we're just sort of very cautious this year about what we spent. I think what sets this apart is this something that we have approved in the past. We've put money into it, and we're gonna lose money unless we move forward. At least, that's my view on it. So I think this is something that's been, it's been approved by councils for the last six years, I believe. It's unfortunate that there were the delays, you know, COVID delays, BART delays. But we are where we are, and we would lose more money not going ahead than if we were to go ahead. So I definitely support moving forward with this. It'll be a great entryway into Lafayette from, from BART.
Okay, so I have to say that I do weigh in in favor of this because of its history and because where we have been supporting this the entire time. And this would be really hard right now to all of a sudden go, ah, you know, we don't want this. So I have to say I am, I am also in favor. Does somebody else have any comment to say?
I guess all I would say, I mean, I guess I will support it given the context. It is disappointing there wasn't contingency fund. That seems odd. Very suspect in this era of construction overruns, everything like that. So I think it's disappointing that we're having to retroactively do a contingency fund to support it. I understand building codes change. We can't do anything about that, but there are some things we could control. But I will support it.
Right.
Yeah, and I could chime in. I mean, I think of myself as a realist, and this is a project that's been ongoing for six years. Yeah, I know, we've had delays with BART. There's been other contingencies too, changes in building code. But, you know, this is sort of like the Jenga piece for this sort of entry. And I figure, look, we're into it halfway already, and I think we just, my take is we just finish it. Not ideal, but I think it'd be a real loss if we just dropped the ball and not let it happen after everything that's gone on for the last six years. So that's my take on it.
All right, so do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain?
Abstain.
Great, thank you. Okay, so goes ahead. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, so we're gonna get to item 13B. The crowd goes crazy.
The front, the front row of seating will be vacated, so please take a seat.
And so, like I said at the beginning of this, before we even start any of the presentations, I'll put 20 minutes for the littlest ones to come and speak if they would like to. If we don't have any littlest ones, that is fine too, but I want to give them an opportunity to be here and then get home. And so-
Just an FYI, we have 39 speaker slips at three minutes each, so we have two hours of public comment.
We do have the option to reduce that to two minutes, correct?
You do.
And I suggest that we do that.
You want to take a vote?
Oh, we take a vote, okay.
Yeah.
All right, can I get some order in the room, please? Thank you. Thank you. Almost used my gavel for the first time. Anyways. So what I'm gonna do, apparently we have 39 speaker slips. And so at three minutes apiece, that's four hours. And so we're not gonna do that. We will make it, we'll reduce it, we're gonna take a vote here to reduce it to two minutes per person with the option of somebody concede your time for another two minutes. That can still be allowed if you're in the room. And I highly recommend that if you are representing a group or a group of people, you can pick your spokespeople, and one or two of you guys can speak on behalf and point out all the people here in the room that support you. That would make this whole evening go much faster. So do we have a motion to reduce public comment to two minutes a person?
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Okay, so we'll have two minutes per person. And so if we can have 20 minutes and a couple of speakers, if you guys will identify yourself as the littlest speakers, and if we don't, we'll just go straight to staff report, but I wanted to give this opportunity to- So do we have any young ones that are wanting to get home that would like to speak? I see a bunch of arrows. Okay, yeah. Come on up, come up to the podium. Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys. You come to the podium and you press the button?
I think the button's already pressed.
Okay.
I think they can just speak. And you want to give everybody how much time?
Two minutes, and then please tell me your names too when you start. So you can pull the microphone down closer. Perfect.
Hi, my name is Harper, and I've played softball since kindergarten. I'm now in sixth grade at Stanley. I think it's unfair that the boys get so much time to practice on nice fields while we have to practice on not-so-nice fields. I also wonder why the boys have always gotten, gotten the nice fields while we have to practice on the school fields, up until last year, when we finally got to practice on upper community, but only for 30 minutes each week, and we still had to share it with the boys. I have also gone to watch my brother play baseball at really nice fields and wondered why do they get some such nice fields while we have to play on the not-so-nice fields? Can you please let us turn one of the baseball fields at Buckeye into a softball field so that all the girls who play softball can play there? Thank you.
Wonderful. I'm gonna ask you guys not to clap, or I know it's gonna be hard. A quiet, a quiet clap. Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Macy, and I've played softball since kindergarten. I'm in sixth grade at Stanley. I've wondered why the boys always get to Snack Shack at Buckeye and get to play on nice bases. We have fake bases, no Snack Shack, and no scoreboard. Plus, boys play two games and two practices each week, and we get one game and one and a half practices each week. By making Buckeye available to girls and softball too, Lafayette can show all the girls that they matter just as much to the boys. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, quiet clap. Thank you, appreciate. Do we have any other young speakers? Okay, go ahead. Of course.
Hi, my name is Aubrey Gregor, and I'm a fifth grader here in Lafayette. I want another good softball field to play on in Lafayette. I don't think it's fair that the boys get access to all four of the community fields, and we only get to play on one of the fields. The field we currently play on is on a hill. We have to walk a much longer distance to get there. This has gone on for so many, too many years. It needs to change. I think that most every softball player in Lafayette has wanted to play at Buckeye fields. When I found out we could have an opportunity to play at Buckeye, I got really excited. But now this may not happen. I would love to play there and on a real softball field.
Thank you. All right.
Hi, my name is Katie, and I'm 10 years old, and I go to Burton Valley. Hi, my name is Scarlett, and I am also 10 years old, and I also go to Burton Valley. We are two softball players. We are here to fight for our rights about softball. There's a law called the Fair Pay to Play Act. This is a law about making sure girls and boys have equal equipment and fields. We need to make, we need to pay more attention to this law, because back before when it was made, women didn't have any rights for anything. Do you want that to happen right now? No, you don't. Guess what? Today, baseball has four city fields, and softball only has one. We have access to school fields, but they're not the same. The city fields are way better. We should have fields, because we love softball so much, and it's not fair if we can only have one good field while the boys have four. We are here to ask you to vote yes on changing the Buckeye field for better, so we can get better at softball. We just ask you to make one little change to one field that will still be playable for softball and baseball. This little change will help generations of girls find the wonders that softball brings to everyone who plays it. Some baseball players think that the most people should get the most fields, but maybe more people would play softball if there are more fields. Softball is really important to us. We hope you will support the cause. Thank you so much for listening to our speech. We hope you understand that this means so much to a lot of little girls, including us. So please vote yes, so we can be the next generation of softball players.
Thank you very much. Any other youngins? Am I seeing any in the room? Any other ones? Give you enough time. All right, you guys, thank you so much for coming and taking advantage of this public process on this really important topic. All right, thank you, Jonathan.
Okay, that's a hard act to follow. Thank you to our young speakers. I'm gonna start by saying it is very unfortunate that we are here this evening. We are so lucky to have passionate families that are involved with our user groups. Lafayette Little League and LMYA are at the heart of this discussion. And as a department, as a city, we're so thankful to have those user groups and to work with them. And it says a lot for our partnership that we're debating this use over city fields. And we can hear how nice city fields are and what a place to be in that we have these parents, these families, all this passion for the use of the facilities and the care for the facilities, and pride in our facilities, that we can come here and have this discussion. But it is unfortunate that we have a shortage of fields that brings us to the table to have this. At the core of this are well-intended families. At the core of this are well-intended families. We're going to hear a lot of public comments. We have families that are looking out for their interest, for their children. And I I trust that the community will have a respectful discussion tonight. And out of this, we'll have a fine future for Lafayette facilities. It is also unfortunate that we are here having this discussion because it isn't an item that was intended to come to city council. We are only discussing a reconsideration of a PTR Commission, Parks, Trails and Trails Commission decision. While I'm going to walk you through the slides that we discussed on August thirteenth, we're not considering the three options that were presented on August thirteenth. We're discussing a reconsideration of their decision and whether or not we're going to uphold, my recommendation is whether or not council will determine whether or not we will uphold that decision this evening. So the information that you'll see on these slides will be a little bit different because there is some extra information in my staff report this evening. I also want to point out that we are here with because Lafayette Little League has requested that this be brought forward and work with the mayor to have it come forward. But Lafayette Little League and LMYA and the existing players are not the only ones that have brought this problem to the table. This is much older than anyone in LMYA right now. It's much older than anybody in Lafayette Little League right now. These are issues that have been discussed since the lease was in place at Buckeye. So any of the individual players that are coming to the table right now are just the ones that are having to deal with the problem that's in front of them right now. But it is much older than any of the players that are currently at the table. With that, I'll start walking us through the slides from the August thirteenth meeting. A little bit of background, we considered AB twenty twenty four oh four. This is the Fair Play Act. This is the state law that requires us to provide equal play opportunities for competitive sports at Lafayette facilities. We are only considering the city of Lafayette fields. The school fields cannot be considered when we're trying to establish a balance of use at our facilities. And it is a balance of use between boys and girls. So equity is at the heart of this, but it is not necessarily a driving factor in what happens out at the fields. When the decision was made by the Parks, Trails and Recreation Commission, the commission did support the removal of the grass infield at Buckeye Fields, Cheney Field. But it was, the compliance was not the only driving factor. The equity of use was a driving factor as well and it's not necessary to create these changes in the capital improvement for softball at the fields. As stated in our public comments, we currently have only one field that is available for softball. That is the upper field at Lafayette Community Park. And it was only made available for this last season. So as we walk through some of the data and the numbers regarding use at the field, softball only gained access last year for the very first time. And that was actually working with both user groups to to bring that forward, Lafayette Little League and LMYA. Let's see, the need for compliance, the, we, we have ended the lease at Buckeye. We have had twenty-one years of lease at Buckeye and this upcoming spring season is our first opportunity to create an opportunity, a softball capital improvement for softball at Buckeye Fields. And because of state law and the concerns the city attorney will express in a statement later tonight are some of the driving factors why we need to make this happen for the spring twenty twenty-six season. Now, at the April thirteenth meeting, this was the information that was presented to the Parks, Trails and Recreation Commission regarding the gender split. As the Parks and Recreation Department, we have access to our own data, but we didn't have the information from the user groups. In the staff report that you have this evening and information that both some, some of the Parks, Trails and Recreation Commissioners requested and the user groups requested, they wanted to know more about the existing use on the fields. In your staff report, you have numbers reported from all the existing users at the rink, the community park and the community fields. It was a fairly even split except for when you came to the the baseball softball use. Lafayette Little League had primarily male participants and didn't have as many female participants. They are highest use, they use through the entire spring and most of the summer. Their use at the fields. They're actually, when you look at the numbers, the only user group that did not provide their data. Every other user group gave me all their gender information, all their schedules and rosters and all that information. The number that's presented in the report from Lafayette Little League is based on a comment that they made at the meeting. So the average number, they let us know that they've had three hundred girls over the twenty years of lease. So we had to do the math to kind of determine that there's only been about fifteen girls a year based on the information that was shared. But despite multiple requests, they have not supplied that information to date. Every other user group has. There's been a lot of questions about the number regarding LMYA as well. The sixty girls that got to use the upper field last season, that is the one season that they got to use the fields. They shared at the meeting that they have over three hundred girls in that program. So sixty isn't the number of softball players that LMYA was proposing. It's actually, in the group, they have a much larger group. Not necessarily every member will utilize Lafayette fields, but a higher number of them could. Same for what was shared from Lafayette Little League. They have seven hundred members. They told us that they cycle most of those participants through Buckeye Fields, but there are certain age groups that play more on those fields as well. So there's data that we can dial down on when we get into the fields and the allocation process. But there's a lot of nuances to how the numbers are going to work and there's some misconceptions around that number of sixty versus three hundred. And that number is just for the ones that got access. And the other thing to add about that is that the user groups worked together really well last year. It was LMYA's first season out there. There was an impact to Lafayette Little League. So they, there was an initial allocation. Little League requested more time. LMYA actually gave up some of their time and doubled up some of their practice to make rooms. The user groups worked very well together when we opened up and started that use on upper field. So there's a great sort of demonstrated record of them being able to work together, collaborate and make these adjustments to work out on the fields. There's been some questions about how old this problem is. Really, since the fields went in at Buckeye, there was, they, twenty-one years ago was the first time that we had grass infield on both the fields. When we've gone through the process of renewing the lease at various, the two, the two times that we've renewed the lease, there has been some talk about softball's interest in the fields. So like I said, the problem is older than any of the current players. This slide has an email exchange from twenty twenty when the then-president Colby Powell, or sorry, then-president Dan Ventrelli and Colby Powell emailed regarding replacing the grass infield at all four fields. And they were given information about this very day and what's happening right now. We could put in the grass and it could have to come out if there was a softball request. So that they, they've been aware of the problems, some of the current players since twenty twenty. But since that presentation that the commission received in two thousand and fifteen, the commission's been looking at this and there has been discussions with the leadership of the user groups. It hasn't necessarily always gotten out, it sounds like, to the participants in the user groups. But this is an old conversation that's gone on with Little League, LMYA boards of past. The, these are the three options that the commission considered. At that time, the remove the mound option was an option that we had to research. It was something that some of the people involved in softball hadn't ever seen used as an option before. It was something that was proposed by Lafayette Little League, but many of us had to go out and learn more about what that might mean. And upon further research, we found out that it's just not used at the high levels of competitive softball. So in order to be compliant, in order to provide the same competitive opportunity that we afford for baseball, just removing the mound and removing the grass in the infield doesn't bring us into a more compliant state. So that option was thrown out. However, the synthetic turf is sort of the option that doesn't work for everybody, but does work for everybody. If you were to put synthetic turf in, so remove the mound, get rid of the dirt altogether and have just a flat synthetic turf infield. It's an expensive option, but it is an option that works for both baseball with a portable mound and softball because it's a playable surface that's used at the higher competitive level. But it's harder to fund because it's the more expensive option. We do have the twenty thousand dollars allocated in this year's budget for option one, the one that, the option that the Parks, Trails and Recreation Commission approved. We weighed some pros and cons. We've gone through some of that in the staff report this evening for you and I'm sure we'll have lots of discussion about that tonight as well. These were diagrams regarding the traditional use of baseball and softball, showing a skinned infield without the mound and baseball with that grass infield. This diagram was prepared showing that softball can be played with no grass. Baseball can be played with the grass infield and both baseball and baseball can also be played with a dirt infield just as it's played on all the school fields right now and at upper community field. Lafayette Little League actually still has more hours of baseball on upper community right now than than any softball group. So despite the the sort of change of use that happened over there, Lafayette Little League still reserves more hours on that field than any other user group. This is a image of the skinned dirt infield with Lafayette Little League's portable mound and screen out there from playing baseball. So that's what a portable mound looks like. So that can be brought to, out to the field so that they can play baseball. This had to do with the funding and timeline. We have that twenty thousand dollars allocated right now. And we need to get it done by the spring twenty twenty-six season. And why community park is not sufficient if it fails to meet the AB twenty four oh four standards. And I'll walk you through some, some images that will show you some of the differences here. So the distance to the parking lot at Buckeye Fields is at its maximum distance, three hundred and seventy-seven feet. At upper community field, it is a distance of eight hundred and eighty-seven feet, so a much larger distance to get to the fields from the parking lot. The distance to the restrooms from the fields, so if you're an umpire or a player and need to get over to the restrooms, you're traveling ninety-nine feet at furthest at Buckeye Fields or seven hundred and sixty-three feet from upper field. The concrete path leading up to Buckeye Fields versus the.
Lights just went off?
Somebody leaned on.
Probably hit, yeah, somebody, yeah, thank you.
We packed them in.
Let that be lit.
This is the, the gravel walking path versus the concrete walking path to get up to the field. So if you were a player, a fan, a grandparent, having to get up to watch the game, there's a difference in path of travel at the two fields. The viewing areas at the two fields, you have the shaded bleachers at Buckeye Fields versus the non-shaded bleachers at upper community. If you'll note that the height of the fence here is shorter and the screens are attached to the higher fences, so it's difficult to achieve that without some capital improvements to make the shade possible. The distance to the batting cage, so if you're a coach or a player and you're trying to operate a practice where you might have players in the batting cage and on the fields at the same time and you're working with them, you're traveling one hundred and sixty-eight feet at furthest at Buckeye versus six hundred and forty-seven feet to get down to the batting cages from upper field at community park. So it would be very difficult to to have that happening at the same time at that facility. At Buckeye Fields, you have additional amenities such as the scoreboards, outfield fences and the sponsor banners that happen on those fences over there. The concession building with the air conditioning. It also has plumbing, refrigeration, storage appliances. There were questions about whether or not a simple shack could be built over the, at community park. It just wouldn't be equal if we didn't have some of these additional amenities installed and there's no electrical, no plumbing. None of those are already installed over at the community park. Lafayette Little League has also been allowed to establish Wi-Fi connection during COVID. It was wonderful. They were able to broadcast games. That, so there's electricity there and means so that they could get that all established. They do pay for that as a utility themselves, but it's something that would be difficult to establish at a community park. This was the summary in the recommendation where they were able to consider the three options and staff's recommendation to remove the dirt infield and establish the seventy-thirty mix. That is the preferred mix for both user groups for most premium field. The upper field mix is not that seventy-thirty mix. There was a mix-up when that went in. It is still an infield surface. It's playable. I think there were some questions on whether or not that dirt surface was unsafe because of what was there. It is still an infield surface. All the user groups play on it. It's similar to an infield that's used at baseball facilities all around the area. And let's see, then I took questions. And I have one more statement before I pass it on here. So to sum up for myself, at the root of this problem is a shortage of quality sports facility, sports field facilities in the community. Sports fields were identified as the number one need in the two thousand and nine Parks Facilities Master Plan and the need predates that plan. The two largest barriers are land and money. When the homes at Deer Hill were an option, we had the land and we had the money, but the community voted it down. This is a mistake that we cannot make again. Currently, we have a shot at the De Silva site across from the Oakwood Athletic Club. The property owner has indicated that they would be willing to work with the city regarding a civic use for a portion of the land. But the costs have gone up, so we don't have the money. And I will add that that's not, this is not the heart of the discussion this evening either. So we will not be considering that as an option, but I want to state that we have opportunities. The city recently passed a half-cent sales tax to avoid a structural deficit and maintain level of service. The twenty thousand we have allocated to change the infills goes beyond maintaining level of service, but is the only affordable way to become compliant with state law. In regards to the funding problem, synthetic turf fields create more premium experience at Buckeye, but will cost two hundred thousand dollars per infield. Upgrades at community park will cost over two million dollars. Developing a brand-new field site could cost well over five million dollars. Additionally, there is a six hundred and fifty thousand, or sorry, six, yeah, six hundred and fifty thousand dollar maintenance project that needs to happen at the Buckeye Fields patio. There's a multimillion-dollar project that needs to take place at the community center to repair the leaking roof and aging HVAC units. The maintenance assessment that the vice mayor referred to earlier is happening right now and it's going to reveal several million dollars worth of deferred maintenance costs that the city is going to need to tackle. So funding any capital projects, especially new ones, is going to be difficult. Our next barrier, one that I'm sure we'll hear is in short supply, is patience. Softball has waited twenty-one years to get access to the fields and they've run out of patience. The baseball players have been enjoying the fields for twenty-one years and are being asked to make room for softball. But they don't have patience to wait for the new fields to be developed. The solution to this problem, the solutions to this problem are land, money and patience. De Silva might be the land and the money only may, may only be possible if the community comes away from this and bands together to form a sales tax, parks bond or huge fundraising effort. The level of patience needed will be determined by how the community walks away from council's decision tonight. Council is going to have to make a decision tonight based on staff's recommendation. It will likely have to follow state law. And support the improvements for softball at Buckeye Fields. This doesn't mean that we can't develop a quality facility, a community park or additional fields in a new location, which would allow us to reevaluate where we could have grass infield. But it's going to take patience, collaboration and community to make that happen. With that, I'm going to pass it to the city attorney who has an additional statement.
Thank you, Jonathan. I just wanted to let the public and the council know that we did review all the information that was presented in the staff report and presented tonight before you and to determine if the city was in compliance with the Fair Play Act. And we do have significant concerns with the current situation and the city's compliance with the Fair Play Act. And it is our recommendation that you move forward with staff's recommendation, option number one, in order to to get into compliance with the Fair Play Act.
Great, thank you. And now I've got one more, one more statement. And this is a joint statement that I got approval from the head of Lafayette Little League, Adam Carmen, and also from Rachel Leonard from LMYA. Because we did try to meet and in good faith, you know, work this problem through to see, you know, you know, work this problem through to see, you know, what we could decide on, and which is always the best way. So here's how it went. Starting on October 3rd, the city, LMYA Softball, and Lafayette Little League held meetings to try to come up with a shared vision agreement for Cheney Fields and the future of softball and baseball facilities that all parties could agree on. This was necessary because at that date, Little League was threatening a lawsuit against the city, and LMYA did discuss our lack of compliance with the Fair Play and Community Sports Act. Little League said at that meeting they were starting to launch their old softball program, consistent with many other Little Leagues across the country. I made the suggestion that a better way forward was to bench the lawyers and just have Rachel from LMYA, Adam from Little League, and me and our Parks Rec Director, Jonathan Cotton-Yagi, meet moving forward. I've made it clear to both parties that I am 100% agnostic to what the shared vision is agreed upon. The only thing that matters is that both LMYA and Little League agree on the vision. This is still true to this day, and I'm so optimistic that we could even do this at the meeting tonight. So the following meeting was on October 10th. Adam Carmen from Little League shared a PowerPoint of the vision that Little League had come up with for immediate actions, two-year actions, and a four-year vision. This was shared with the city and LMYA, and the goal was set for the, at the next meeting, that LMYA should come back with their assessment of this proposal. So at the meeting on October 7th, LMYA did come back with their assessment of the proposal, and there was only one single point of contention left. The rest of the shared vision was endorsed by LMYA, which to me was a serious progress since our first meeting. At this point, Little League made it clear that their very strong preference was to arrive at a solution versus pursuing legal avenues. LMYA at that point is still considering a lawsuit against the city depending on our decision. Knowing that we had still not reached full agreement, I told them I was considering delaying any decision on this topic until they could reach an agreement. But by our final meeting last week on Tuesday, October 21st, staff and our city attorney had said that if the council did not hear the decision, the PTR decision would stand. So I requested that we move forward with this meeting tonight. So what I want to share with you now is details of the progress we made during those meetings, where both parties stand at the moment. Again, if I say anything that you guys have changed your mind on, you know, since today and now, please let me know during public comment. First, the good progress made and the things that both parties agree on. One, LMYA Softball will play on Cheney Field for the first time in 2026. Jonathan has a method of allocating fields for all the parties involved, and LMYA Softball will end the, begin the rotation for time slots at Cheney Field this upcoming season. Two, these are the things that are agreed upon by both parties. The permanent mound on Cheney Field will be removed, and a portable mound will be used for baseball. All right, next. Little League agreed to provide $30,000 for immediate improvements to Upper Community Fields, which is used by both softball and baseball. LMYA also agrees to contribute funds to a future softball complex and improvements at Upper Community Field. LMYA and Little League agrees that a task force should be created to help the schools improve their fields. LMYA and Little League agrees the city should develop plans and budget to add a softball-only field at Community Park, ultimately creating a two-field softball complex and amenities similar to Buckeye, as well as engage Little League, LMYA, and other stakeholders in related fundraising opportunities. So Little League has launched a softball program and intend to also request time on Cheney Field, but will not require the removal of the grass infield as a stopgap measure until the shared vision of creating a softball-only field is completed. So as you can see, these meetings did result in many positive outcomes, including agreement on the shared multi-vision of building two softball-only fields of community fields. Little League has already spoken with architects and shared possible field configurations publicly. But unfortunately, we still have that one point of disagreement. LMYA wants the infield grass to move to Cheney Field in addition to removing the dirt pitchers mound. So now I'll go through some of things that may potentially happen once we make a decision tonight based on the statements made by both LMYA and Little League. So if the council chooses option one, which is the one recommended by staff and Parks and Rec to remove the grass infield at Cheney Field in addition to the agreed-upon mound remover, removal. Little League's position is that they would likely not donate the extra $30,000 to immediately fix the Upper Community Fields, as this funding is intended to be in addition to the $20,000 that the city would have had because it wouldn't have spent it on removing the grass infield. Little League does not feel it will be able to fundraise in any near the capacity that they are capable of if the city removes the infield grass at Cheney. It is unclear what the status of a shared vision for future softball complex will be. And Little League may pursue a lawsuit against the city for preliminary injunction, intending to pause the removal of the grass infield. So if the council chooses option three, which is just to remove the dirt pitchers mound and not the infield grass, LMYA has indicated that they may pursue a lawsuit against the city for failure to comply with the, comply with the Fair Play Act. If a lawsuit is filed, it is unclear what the status of a shared vision of the future of softball, softball complex will be. I just want to make sure that we, we agree on that. That is what we came to at these meetings. This is, so we tried, and we tried really hard on behalf of our communities to make this meeting either not happen or take a different format because we have a shared vision, but that we couldn't reach that agreement in time, and that is why we are here. Anyway, so now I want to go on. Does anybody have any questions of the staff? And this is the first time that these council members are really hearing this, so they may have a lot of questions. So this is how we do the meetings. Council will ask questions. We'll get all of our questions out of the way, then we'll go to public comment. All right, so we're going to questions now.
All right, great. Thank you. Thank you, Jonathan. Just a couple of questions following your staff report. You mentioned at the, for the option one, when you were summarizing the kind of the decisions for options one, two, and three, you said Lafayette Little League's safety concerns with option one. Can you expand on that?
So the league has expressed safety concerns with the way that the ball would interact with the dirt and the way that it works with the dirt at Upper Field. Lafayette Little League currently plays on dirt fields at the school fields. They currently utilize Upper Field. I think at its highest level, there may be some concerns in how the ball moves, and they talk about wild pitches and things like that. That can happen at fields based on the quality of the grass and the maintenance and upkeep at those facilities as well. So it really has to do with some of the prep and care that goes into the fields of the dirt prior to the games as well, something that the parent volunteers do at both Upper Community and at all the fields where they, where they help to care for those facilities as well. And we maintain a partnership with all the volunteer groups and are very open to them coming out and working on those facilities.
Okay, maybe we'll, we might hear some more about that. Okay, that makes sense. And then you also mentioned the $20,000 that have been allocated in last year, in the budget. So that was obviously approved many, many months ago, the money you're using now. And was that for converting the field? I guess I was a little confused, or is that just money you had seeing there for field maintenance? And we're going to use that money to, you were proposing to use the money to remove the grass?
That ask, that ask was put into the budget for this exact purpose. Staff knew that the lease was coming to an end. We had been working with the user groups. We had been discussing a need for this for quite some time. The idea of fundraising for synthetic turf, if we needed to make that change, was not one that was new to the leadership of the user groups. It's something that we've been discussing for several years at different times. It's something that we've tracked our ability to look at over time as well. It's been on staff's radar and the PTR commission's radar. If we ever found ourselves in a position where we were fiscally stable and had an opportunity to put that ask in, we would have come forward with that as an ask. If we had gone with a full-cent sales tax instead of a half-cent sales tax, and you had said, "Hey, what new projects can we bring to the table?" That's one that we may have brought forward. But we did the half-cent sales tax to avoid the structural deficit, and this was a compliance issue. This is like if I had a restroom that was not ADA compliant, and I knew that was coming up, and I needed to put something in the budget to rework that restroom, I put in a similar ask in to make sure I could bring my facility into compliance.
Okay, that makes sense. So it's kind of been in the, even though it seems like it's a surprise to a lot of people in community, and I think to us, you're really saying you've, it's kind of, for you and your team, it's been in the works for quite a while. And then, finally, well, no, I guess, I guess that's it for now. I think, thank you very much.
Any other questions?
I do. I mean, the report was very thorough with respect to options one, two, and three. I think I get that. You mentioned several times that the root of the problem is the shortage of fields, and the data in the staff report would seem to support that. And I was taking notes here. The work on the community field was, what was the ballpark? Was it like 600 and something thousand or?
So 650,000 is Buckeye's patio. So that is a maintenance problem that we have right now. When the fields at Buckeye were constructed, it was a very rainy year, and the compaction in sections of the patio presented problems. And it's something we, from a maintenance standpoint, have to chase. We have to fill and grind and do things. So we have a project to fix that, that we've designed, but we, once again, find ourselves in a place where we don't have the capital funds to do that improvement.
Yeah, for the record, we went on a tour of that. It's pretty evident that there's a problem there. So, yeah, I get that. For a new field, the figure I wrote down was $5 million. Is that like a whole brand-new field? Or is it something at the community, the community field? Can you just elaborate? Again, I know it's outside the scope of this discussion. I just want to understand what the bigger picture is.
Yeah, it could vary based on the site and the location. If we were to reassess how Community Park worked, you could look at the field configurations now and start to look at, you have some areas where you'll have a large soccer field like we have at Lower Community, and you might see a baseball backstop on either corner of those facilities, where the, if you hit the ball, they didn't interfere with each other. We could assess how those worked in those fields. However, there's problems when you start doing that, and you have transitions between the dirt and the grass. So you have to start looking at synthetic turf and the cost of those transitions when you're trying to squeeze a facility into those spaces. And if you're looking at other areas of Community Park, you have to look at the level of grading you have to do. When those fields were built at Community Park, the very first thing that happened the next year was the hill slid down. And when we had the rain a few years back, the hill slid down. We've got that problem all around town where when we get heavy rains, we have green hills and great schools, but sometimes those green hills come down. And that's the problem we're facing at Buckeye right now. We have a wonderful hill behind that facility that drains down to the field, and we need a French rain at the back of it. So we have to look at how we grade and what improvements have to be installed, so we're not chasing those problems. So it could be a couple million dollars if we could get it into a, into one of our existing facilities. It could be $5 million plus if we had to go into a site where we had to do extensive grading. The site at De Silva is one that I brought up. And what we squeeze into that site when we're looking at parking and fields, you have to consider how far you're cutting into the hills and what might have to go into a site like that if we were to get that opportunity to develop that site.
Thank you.
Questions? Okay.
I have a question for the city attorney. In a number of the public comments that we got, there were comments on the current level of participation in softball. And my question is, what impact does current level of participation have on a decision, if this were to be just go before a court, as to whether the city is providing equitable opportunity?
Well, I think a little bit of the current number is skewed, given that we had an exclusive lease for the, for the Buckeye Fields. And then just more recently, we had the one field open up. So, so I think the courts would look at that, but given that we only had the one field open up in the last year is my concern, is that that's what would be reviewed as opposed to having two fields, four fields. You know, we currently have four existing fields, and only one field has been opened in the last year. So that's what I think the court would be looking at, and there is a desire and an interest to use the fields. And the fields are being used in other cities, other schools. That's what, that's what I think would be reviewed.
So a court could look at it and say, "Well, if there were equal opportunity, then there would be more use by girls."
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
It might be worth a follow-on also. On that vein, we have heard that Lafayette Little League is starting a softball program of their own. So there'd be more girls potentially playing, and they would be playing, I guess, on the fields as constructed currently. Does that mitigate any of this with the future would have more girls playing? Does that mitigate any concerns?
Having more girls playing would be good.
Through Lafayette Little League.
Both programs. I think, I think what we would anticipate, and Jonathan, I would obviously defer to you, but I think we would anticipate more girls playing both if Little League opens up a softball program and with LMYA having expansion and access to more fields.
But even if they were okay playing as Cheney or Buckeye as configured, that really wouldn't reduce the-
No, I would still be concerned, and I would still recommend that you move forward with option one and the modifications proposed.
Okay, thank you.
One last one. I know the last time when Buckeye was created, we were able to secure a state grant with the help of our state senator at the time. Is there any funding like that available these days that you've heard of? I know there's some open space. There are some parks there.
There's occasionally grants that are made available for the parks. We're traditionally not competitive when it comes to the income levels in the community. We get a very, very small percentage of the property taxes, but our, when it comes to the grants, it's not the taxes that we receive. It's the income of our residents that we're often graded against. So we are less competitive sometimes. Though there are, Brook Street Park was an earmark grant, and sometimes those come up if there are needs in the community. We'd seek any of those opportunities as they come up, and we'd invite any grants that want to come forward and help us with our facility needs.
Great, thank you. All right, are we done with questions? Okay, great. We'll go to public comment. It's like we said, two minutes.
The mayor and council members will take commenters in the community hall first. Once I'm finished reading off all the speaker slips and those persons who wish to speak, please give me your speaker slips now. Do not wait. And then I will go to the few people that are in our Zoom participants at second. So our first speaker is Victor Silva, to be followed by Alfonso or Chico Garcia.
And if you hear that you're next, please feel free to go and stand kind of behind the podium so you can transition quicker.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Victor Silva. I've been the softball coach at Akcolines High School for 22 years. I've coached the Lafayette Lightning travel team for 15 years. We have no feeder program in Lafayette for softball, where the girls, they don't have a field. Softball's a skilled sport. They need a field to develop the skills. And unfortunately, I've been, fortunately for me, I've had a lot of girls that play in Pleasant Hill, Martinez, Concord, and Benicia, and they're able to have, they have the fields, and they're able to develop their skills. We don't have that in Lafayette, and we need it. I just, it's just so important. If we're ever going to have, I've been very fortunate. I've had girls, I grew up in Oakland, and there were so many fields. We spent our whole time after school and on the weekends playing baseball, and it was so nice. You know, we didn't have to worry about fields. We don't have that here for girls. And it's just really important, I think, that we do something. So, thank you.
No, thank you.
Chico?
Good evening. Thank you, council and honorable mayor. Yeah, I was here back in 99 and 2000. I used to coach over at Campolindo Travel Ball Team. And I remember the Little League team used to come and try to kick us off the field, and this was the girls' softball field. And so we had a parent who was a lawyer, so he did a Title IX lawsuit and got the boys. I don't know where they went. I guess it was to Buckeye, or this might have been before Buckeye. But it started then, and then a few years later, I was over, I was coaching high school at College Park High School, and I did a Title IX lawsuit there. I was not part of the one at Campbell, but in 2000, I was part of one, and then I found out that College Park had leased the field to the Pleasant Hill Parks and Rec through the Mount Devil School District. And so I resigned after the 2002 season because the field was not my own. And so they had adult softball playing on the girls' softball field. So that was over there in Pleasant Hill. But just recently, this past year, we finally won that lawsuit. So it was 25 years, but they went in there, the Padonine lawyers, and they saw that there had been no improvements done to the to the College Park softball field and the baseball field had been growing, you know, for 25 years. And so we find, you know, they finally won. I almost said we, but I'm going to be helping out Victor this year over at Akalani. So I just think it's important that the girls have their own facility because they need growth. And you'll find out that it'll grow. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? No.
Chelsea Bowman, followed by Carol Best.
Thank you. I just want to take a moment to say what we're talking about and it's youth sports. Youth sports builds confidence, teamwork and community. I think we see that by all the athletes in the room today. And I think we all agree on many things. We agree we need more fields. We agree every child deserves equitable, sport-specific access. Where we differ is on timing and how, but we have a lot in common. It's also important to recognize that there's been decades of investment, time, money and care poured into the current system. And I can understand how a change feels like we are taking something away, but we're not. We are building something more for more people in our community. We can't tell girls to wait for equity. It's been 40 years. It's time to show them that fairness and access aren't just long-term goals. Their goals we're going to do now. Multi-use fields, this is not a softball field, it's a multi-use field, makes that possible. It's flexible, it expands access, it's happening all around us in surrounding communities and the boys figure out how to play on dirt. And you guys are in a position of leadership. Sometimes in leadership, we have to make hard, unpopular choices. But real leadership is choosing what's right, not just what's easy or familiar. Let's not look back in five years and tell the girls we're still planning for what they deserve. Let's give it to them now.
Keep the audit, keep the clapping quiet. Thanks, guys.
Ms. Bowman said it better than I could. Just look at all the passion around the room. What we're asking for, what LMYA is asking for, is a simple truth that we raise our children with. We, what is one of the first principles we all teach our kids? To share. Let's share one more field, not all four fields, but a second field for shared use. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rachel Leonard, to be followed by Danielle Leonard. And I believe they're speaking together. I'll give you four minutes.
All right, I'm going to go first. You all know me by now. My name is Rachel Leonard and I stand before you tonight, not only as the LMYA softball commissioner, but as the mother of a softball player, a former college softball player, a softball coach for the past five years and for as long as this one wants me to keep coaching her, and a member of this community for almost 15 years. I have already said a lot of words on LMYA's position. I've spoken to everyone in this room, or at least up there I've spoken to. But I want to point out a few key issues that are very important. When Lafayette Little League approached the city requesting to put grass on the fields at Buckeye many years ago, Lafayette Little League was told by Jonathan that if there was a request from softball to use the fields at Buckeye, the grass would have to be removed. Lafayette Little League went ahead with the grass anyway. Exactly what Jonathan foresaw has now happened. Softball requested field access, the Park Trails and Rec Commission approved removing of grass, but despite being warned that this exact thing was going to happen, Lafayette Little League is fighting against it. It seems very wrong to argue against something that was a known eventuality. Playing softball on grass fundamentally changes the game and asking these girls to play softball on grass is wrong. It's like asking a tennis player to play tennis with a pickleball paddle. Is the grass that important on Chaney Field that these softball players should be forced to compromise the way the game is played for an unknown number of additional years until a currently not even planned for future second field is is built? Shouldn't we be showing the girls in our community that the way their sport is played matters? If the infield at Chaney is skinned, there will still be two regulation baseball fields in the city with four fields available to baseball and only two for softball. Why work so hard to continue the status quo when these girls have not had equity for decades? This entire issue boils boils down to compliance with a law that has been in existence since 2004 and required compliance by 2006. It is 2025. Girls are simply required to have equitable access to fields and amenities and giving them access to Chaney with grass on the infield is not equitable. LMYA cannot in good faith agree to leave the grass on the infield as that is not in the Lafayette girls' best interest, nor does the law support or condone any compromise that will perpetuate unequal access for these girls. This isn't about Lafayette Little League or LMYA. This isn't about baseball versus softball. It's about girls being shown that they should be able to play their sport the way it's played. This community needs to send a message that girls and girls' sports matter. Where I grew up, girl's softball in the local Little League did not exist until I was in fourth grade. Before that, girls had no other option but to play baseball. As a little girl, seeing that my community created a space for me, my friends and my sport meant everything. These girls deserve the same feeling and support from you.
Hi, my name is Danielle Leonard and I'm a sixth grader at Stanley Middle School. I have played softball with LMYA for five years. I think that we as girls should not have to compromise how our sport is played. Right now, there are four fields in the city and only one is available for girls to play softball. Just because we are girls does not mean that we should have, be treated differently and get less fields to play on than the boys. I love softball and I want to be able to play on dirt as it's supposed to be played on without any compromise.
Thank you. Do we, one second, wait. Any questions for the speaker? As the head of LMYA softball, this is an opportunity to ask this. So thank you.
Yeah, I have a question. We spoke earlier today and I asked you why it was so important to have a dirt field and I appreciated your answer. And if you could take one minute to explain why grass is not acceptable to you and why it's important for softball to be played on a dirt field, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. It'll fundamentally change the way the girl, the game is played. It's a quick sport. The girls, the base, the pitcher is closer to the catcher, the distance between baseball and softball pitchers is different, the ball comes in quickly, the ball comes off the bat really quickly. If there's grass, the ball's going to just stop. It's going to slow down with the way the ball is comprised, with the way the ball's hit, with the way it hits the grass and bounces. And the shortstop, if she fields the ball, or the second baseman, or the third baseman, or any infielder, they're going to have to charge the ball even more, they're going to make less outs at first, there's going to be more baserunners, there's going to be longer games, there's going to be higher scoring games. And that is just not the way the game is played. And if you're, we're raising these children, whether it's baseball or softball, to be playing the sport, they need to be trained in the same way that their sport is played. So it will fundamentally change the speed with which the ball gets to the infielders, the speed with which the ball gets to whatever base the out is being made at, more baserunners, longer games. It's just fundamentally different. They're different sports requiring a different surface.
Sure, all right, thank you. Any other questions?
I do have a.
Okay, go ahead.
This may is to staff, actually. Just Rachel mentioned, referred back to the 2020 statement where you had put in some sort of preview of, you know, this might be done. I'm just going, just to confirm, in 2020, you weren't adding grass, you were just replacing the grass or what was happening? Because it wasn't dirt before that, was it? Or was it? It was low and clear from the documents.
All four fields had grass infields at that time. It it needed to be replaced and well, it it benefited from being replaced and Lafayette Little League wanted to do it at that time. And that was an email exchange between myself and the president and the incoming president as well as part of that. So that's when they were made aware.
Okay, so it was grass before and it was just, okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I just have a question. What is your position on turf compared to dirt? Turf would be fine.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, no, thank you very much.
Okay, our next speaker is Maya Shoenher. If I've mispronounced that name, please let me know, followed by Dr. Rebecca Anderson.
My name is Maya Shoenher. I'm a senior at Akalani's High School and a part of the Female Athlete Board. I have played softball since first grade and am going on to play softball at a four-year college. I'm also a pitching coach for kids in the area. When I was younger, there was no softball available for kindergarteners, so my parents and I decided to sign me up to play Lafayette Little League with my twin brother. There was only one coach who was willing to draft me because the other coaches in the draft were against my participation. My coach told my parents that the other coaches said things like, why would a girl sign up to play baseball? My brother played until fifth grade and I saw how good he had it versus my not-so-great experiences. I remember learning to pitch on overgrown fields or worn-out pitching circles, something that makes it difficult and dangerous to pitch. First and second grade, I drove all the way to Santa Monica to play softball and then played LMYA until sixth grade, eventually then switching to Pleasant Hill softball. In both of those other leagues, softball is given an equal amount of attention as baseball. All of the PHBA games are played on dual-purpose fields and no one complains. I believe that LMYA softball is and will continue to improve in this area. Akalani's players help with clinics and I can see the growth that is already occurring. This year, it is unlikely that Akalani softball will have a JV team, given that players in the area currently lack the experience and the opportunity while baseball will have Frosch, JV and varsity. One more field could change softball in the area completely while baseball would remain unaffected. This should not be a debate, it should be an easy decision, give the girls this equal opportunity. We need to put players first for the younger players I coach, for others who want these opportunities in Lafayette. Thank you.
Thank you. I actually have a question for you. When you said you played in the other leagues, you played on dual-purpose fields. That's a term I haven't heard.
Yeah, it's multipurpose. It's the same. You could play baseball and softball on.
So it's an artificial turf?
Dirt. But they're.
Oh, so the baseball's playing on dirt and softball's playing on dirt?
Yeah.
Okay, so the dirt infields. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Rebecca Anderson, to be followed by Sonia Garnett.
I'm out of breath because I was running. I dropped my daughter off. She spoke earlier and I had a really nice speech that I wrote, but now all I have is this 10-year-old speech that they already gave. So thank you. I just wanted to say that I grew up playing sports, was a varsity athlete. My sport was not recognized in my high school. I was recruited to play sports in college. Throughout that entire time, I was told I had to wait, wait for uniforms, wait for space. And I don't want to wait anymore. I am so proud that my daughter was up here speaking tonight. Took a lot of courage to do that and it's really important that she all saw how many men are here to support her, but I'm glad she left because I don't want to hear how many people don't support women's sports. It is a fundamentally different game if you do not have the dirt infield. I didn't know I could dream to have her play at Chaney. It was amazing to see my son play there. I would really like to see my daughter play there and play there as a softball player, playing on a softball field, not playing on a second-class field. And I swear I had a really nice elegant speech prepared, but it's gone, so I will leave it at that. Thank you.
So thank you. You can email it to us, too.
Hello. My name is Sonia Garnett and I am the head softball coach for St. Mary's College, a Division One program up the hill in Moraga. I am proud of our athletes for being here tonight, but I'm also extremely proud of the entire department, the rugby team and other members of our department for showing up to support women in this cause today. As someone who started playing softball over 35 years ago, I have seen my share of girls and women leave the sport for a variety of reasons, but the main reasons are usually lack of access, cost, distance they have to travel and negative experiences, all of which we can help mitigate here today with this decision. I fear that the core of this debate is going to be seen as LMYA versus Lafayette Little League and boys and men versus girls and women. And I could, it could not be further from the truth. This is a community advocating for young girls to be a part of the conversation, conversation and consideration from the beginning. In a somewhat easy-to-find Parks and Trails recreational general plan updated, dated 2002 and updated in 2008, which I have here with me today, the city recognized the need for more parks and I quote, "According to the standard of five acres, for each 1,000 persons, the city presently has a shortage of about 46 acres of parkland," which I believe you referred to earlier. At the end, after considering some goals that need to provide better recreational facilities for growing families in the area, the city concluded that for the time on the, of the horizon of the plan, there will be a persistent need for additional playing fields for soccer, baseball, roller hockey and lacrosse. As a coach of a Division One softball team, I am beside myself that in 2002, softball was not even a consideration. Softball had been in the Olympics in 1996. The sport in California was taking off and the interest in the area was growing significantly. In 2001, Cal Berkeley went to the College World Series where they lost to Stanford. Sorry, I'll try to wrap it up.
Thank you.
We were the hub and we are here to rectify that. Softball is played on dirt fields to keep the speed of the game competitive. It would be a Title IX issue for us if we were asked to play on grass. Little League had the privilege to upgrade.
Does somebody want to see their time? Somebody want to give up her time? Two minutes? Yes, please. All right, put your, oh, you already spoke, so some, it was five seconds. Okay, all right.
Sorry, all, all, I'm summarizing, I'm summarizing. Thank you.
No, you can only do one person, so thank you.
Most male and female sports share facilities, basketball, soccer, volleyball, lacrosse, et cetera. Baseball and softball often highlight the disparity between male and female sports and here in Lafayette is a perfect example. We know that Lafayette Little League had the privilege to upgrade and maintain Buckeye Field to its current standard and they have done a great job. What an impact it would have to extend that privilege to softball families and organizations.
Thank you, thank you. Any questions for the speaker? Wait, wait, one second, question.
I just want to take the opportunity on behalf of the council coach to congratulate you on back-to-back conference championships.
Yes, yes. Go Gales. Who's next?
Okay, I have a speaker slips here from Scarlett and Katie and I believe you spoke as young girls earlier. Is that correct? They went home, okay, good.
Okay.
All right, I just didn't want to miss them. Okay, next speaker is Alessandra Pignan and Sandra, to be followed by Sandra Wolf. Please correct my pronunciation of your last name.
Oh, it's on, okay. It's Alessandra Pagnam. And I am, I wanted to, so I'm here today as a parent in the community with both a boy and a girl who play Lafayette Little League and LMYA. And I'm, just really want to say that I want us to work together for our kids. I don't want to spend our money fighting against each other. I want it to bring us together in building more fields, more courts and better access for all kids in Lafayette. I moved around growing up a lot. I moved around growing up, I moved around a lot growing up, sorry. And what I learned is that strong communities take care of their kids and each other. That's why my husband and I chose to raise our family here. In fact, he actually grew up here in Lafayette, playing Lafayette sports, the oldest of four kids, where his sisters also played LMYA softball and he played Lafayette Little League. As we've heard tonight, this is a issue that's been longstanding here in Lafayette that there are not enough fields. We should take this moment to think bigger, where we can improve underused fields, fix parking and safety and create safe routes so that kids can walk or bike to practice, especially Buckeye Field. You can't do that to that field, you can to other fields in Lafayette. And it's dangerous when they're playing games around Buckeye Field. They're also impacted as my sons played there and those, the parking lots always crowded, you have to shuttle back and forth. So I want to remember that maintaining those fields too and running the snack shacks takes hundreds of volunteer hours every season. That's community work at its best. We can build on that. Imagine Lafayette leading the way, creating new fields and leagues that bring families together and even generate. that bring families together and even generate revenue for the city. Let's focus our time and energy and money on building more fields and not fighting over less.
Thank you. All right, let's keep quiet. Quiet, quiet claps. All right, Sandra Wolf?
Just clarifying, I'm Samantha Wolf. Maybe my bad handwriting got... I don't think there's another S-Wolf here, so I'm gonna go ahead.
So Samantha Wolf?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening. I've been a Lafayette resident nearly my entire life. My son has played baseball here. My daughter currently plays softball here. You heard from her earlier this evening. I'm here because my daughter is entitled to all of the same privileges as my son, but she's not currently receiving them. The Fair Play Act was passed in 2004. Compliance was required by 2006. And here we are, 20 years later, arguing over infield grass at one city infield. Meanwhile, generations of girls have not had the same opportunities to play on city fields as the boys. The staff report clearly shows this disparity. This year, girls' softball got 135 hours of field time, while boys' baseball got over 3,500 hours. Even worse, Upper Community Field, which was configured for girls to use this year, was occupied by baseball four times more than softball. And keep in mind that for all years prior to this, the number of hours that girls were able to play softball on city fields was zero. What seems to be lost in this discussion is the impact on our girls. The proposal for the girls to just play on a grass infield prevents them from properly learning how to play the sport, and it places them at a disadvantage. This is not a compromise they should have to make, and it's not one that we're asking of our boys. Ultimately, tonight's decision comes down to this. What do you value more? One grass infield, or the ability of all girls in our community to learn how to play properly and to be given access just the same as the boys? It shouldn't be a difficult decision. Please do the right thing. Show our girls in this community that we care about them and we value them equally. Thank you.
Next speaker is Rand Critten, followed by Cameron Smith.
City Council and the mayor. My name is Rand Critten, and I actually appeared in front of the then-council 25 years ago as the president of Lafayette Little League. And I was the LMYA vice president in charge of Lafayette. And at the time, Lafayette Little League was not allowing the playing of soccer on the, what was then the 711 Fields, now the Buckeye Fields. And we couldn't get the grant from the state to renovate because it was not a two-sport field. Luckily, the board of Little League at the time, the president that was so adamant that the fields were sacred to baseball, got transferred to Sacramento. And I lost a bet with two other people and I got stuck as president. And because I was in charge of Little League and I was in charge of LMYA for Lafayette, it was a no-brainer. We got the money. And we got the $300,000 from the city council at the time, and we got the money from the Field of Dreams Committee that was there. And it allowed for kids to play in what is now the Buckeye-Chaney Fields. Matt Chaney was on our board of directors at the time. The whole concept there was one of letting, of building something for our community and working, having Little League and LMYA work together. The idea of lawyers involved is crazy. Our kids need the fields and they need the access to the fields. That's what we did 25 years ago. We built these wonderful fields. And to have them now the subject of something that shouldn't be an issue. These are our kids. This is our community. We should be working together to solve these problems, and I applaud you for doing so as much as you could. But we don't need lawyers and we don't need lawsuits.
Thank you. Any questions? Oh, yeah, wait, one question. One second.
Yeah, thank you very much. Did LMYA have a softball program at that time?
You know, it was 25 years ago. And to be really... Hate to be, you know, pull the old age card. I just don't remember that we did. Yeah, I just don't... We were so worried about getting the fields done. And I wish I could tell you that we did or we didn't, but I just don't remember that we did. So I apologize for that. Also apologize for not putting all that stuff in writing so that you guys wouldn't have to worry about it now. We had the ownership. Lafayette Little League had an ownership interest in the fields, whether it was proprietary or written down. We knew that we had it because the board was, the city council was scared to death of Lafayette Little League, that we were going to go ahead and do something to get you guys kicked off. And we gave that up to get the million dollars to fix the field and make the fields where they were. We gave up our right to claim that the ownership of the fields was ours. We gave that up to the city and that's where everything, you know, all that transition happened.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Cameron Smith to be followed by Sasha Canito.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Hello, as you guys know, my name is Cameron Smith, and I play Division I softball at St. Mary's College of California. And I was blessed enough to receive an athletic scholarship. When I heard about this council meeting, I knew it was something I had to be involved in. I, along with my entire team behind me, support equitable field access for girls' softball. I see no reason why the baseball players should have access to three fields while softball girls have, only have access to one, which has already been mentioned, that it's terribly far from any facilities, snack bars, and restrooms. From what I understand, the proposed solution would be to get a portable mound so that one of the fields is accessible for both baseball and softball. I could see no reason why anyone would want to prevent these young girls from having the same amount of opportunity as their male peers, especially when they would not even be losing access to their third field just sharing it with softball. This situation makes me think back to how fortunate I was to have access to four dirt softball fields in Mission Viejo, California, when I was a young girl. That accessibility, along with a lot of support and hard work, made it possible for me to be where I am today. I feel that you all have a responsibility to make sure that these girls in Lafayette get the same chance that I did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sasha to be followed by Alexis Tomei.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sasha Canedo, and I'm a senior on the St. Mary's softball team. On my team, we talk a lot about what our "why" is. Why we show up every day for early morning waits, why we stay late to get extra reps, why we stay up late studying to get good grades, and lastly, why we show up and fight for what we believe in. My "why" is becoming, my "why" is becoming the strong woman that I, that my younger self always knew I could become. So I, along with my teammates, stand before you today, not just as women, but as little girls who once had a dream of becoming Division I athletes, wanting to represent all our future female athletes. We are here to fight for one of the baseball fields to be turned into a dirt softball field. Our future leaders are having to walk all the way in the back corner, being far away from any access to bathrooms, is something that is inexcusable. Not only that, but the unequal space provided for softball and baseball is clear. A large factor of why girls drop out of sports is contributed to issues of safety and transportation. Every day, we have the choice of whether we want to contribute to the impact of our future female athletes. The world I grew up in as an athlete looks drastically different than it does for little girls we are fighting for today. In their world, they see famous female athletes such as Jocelyn Aloe, Serena Williams, Simone Biles, and Kaitlin Clark compete on state-of-the-art facilities. Today is the day that we provide equitable access to future female athletes of our community. This community has already seen a lack of opportunities for competitive softball players in this area. In a survey found 85% of women who played sports have said they developed skills that were important to the success in their professional fields. Every little girl you look at isn't just a little girl. There are future doctors, businesswomen, teachers, coaches, the list is endless. This isn't just about a field. This is about the fight to show our girls the power of our voices when we stand up to those who try to quiet ours. So my question to you is, will you make the decision to rise up with us and stand for all of our current and future leaders, or will you further contribute to the problem? Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Alexis Tomei to be followed by Maria Storte.
Hello. I had the pleasure to be part of a female panel in your computer science class. Good to see you. It's actually Lexi Tammany. I must have really bad handwriting. I don't know. Good evening. I'm a teacher and a coach at Akalani's, and I'm also the advisor of the Female Athletic Board, which is composed of the leaders and captains for the girls' sports teams, so I felt compelled to be here. AB 2404 establishes clear legal criteria for gender equity, ensuring that local governments provide a literal fair playing field for all young athletes. And the law is not ambiguous here. And the city attorney, the PTR Commission, and two state lawmakers have all weighed in and agreed at this point. Option one respects AB 2404 in both letter and spirit. Baseball still retains use of all four fields while the girls finally gain a second appropriate facility in all the ways. We've talked about the parking concession and the number of fields, so the genders have the same experience. We just saw this play out at College Park High School, as you know, where the baseball facilities were drastically superior to the girls' softball facilities. And Mount Dable Unified settled a widely-publicized lawsuit alleging sex discrimination. I would assume that the city of Lafayette certainly doesn't want to be settling a sex discrimination lawsuit that could be avoided right now by following the clear recommendations by the city attorney. And many of the public comments that I read through that opposed the lawful compliance cite concerns that providing equitable access for girls is harming the boys, and we should look for a long-term solution that's beneficial to both parties. I love the idea of a long-term solution, but this change needs to be made now for the girls that are in their softball-playing years now. I'm also a mom of a 13-year-old girl, and I know how fleeting this time in her life is. The six-to-13-year-olds cannot wait for the right time to benefit both parties. We need the benefit now. The girls in this age range, they just can't wait. In five years' time, they're out of their softball-playing years. We need to make this change.
Thank you.
Hello. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council, and members of the community. My name is Mario Stordi. So thank you for letting me talk. I'm fortunate enough to grow up in the area. I have two sisters and a 13-year-old niece. I'm very lucky to attend St. Mary's, where I'm the team captain of our men's rugby team. As a club sport, we don't have scholarships, and we're asked to compete at a high level and are held to a high standard as people. I still show up every day because it teaches me life lessons, like how to work hard, build community, and believe in myself. It teaches me to speak up when I think something is right or wrong. So today, I'm here to support the softball team and the girls of Lafayette. We're honored to be part of the same school as our softball team, who are, like I said, back-to-back WCC champions. They inspire girls all around the community. Now it's up to us as a community to give these girls an opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. One second, we have a comment.
Yeah, it would be remiss not to congratulate you and your teammates on your national championship.
Yes.
Okay, we have next Hannah Ferguson, I believe, followed by Nancy and Erin Hu.
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Hannah Ferguson, and this is Odie Vasquez. And I'm here tonight alongside my 27 Division I softball teammates and four coaches from St. Mary's. We're proud to stand before you, not just as college athletes, but as women who deeply care about the next generation of girls growing up in this community. These girls aren't asking for shaded stands, scoreboards, close-by concessions, or bathrooms, all of which the boys have, but they are simply asking for another field to play the sport they love. We've heard arguments that the softball team doesn't need another field. But what message does that send? When boys have three fields and girls have one, we are teaching our youth from the very beginning that boys' sports matter more, that their time, their opportunities, and their dreams are the priority. We are living in a moment where women's sports are thriving. College softball has become one of the most-watched sports on ESPN, and professional women's softball is now partnering with Major League Baseball and expanding across the country. Female sports are inspiring and redefining what sports can mean for all of us. But that growth doesn't start on national television. It starts here, on local fields like Lafayette's. On the first day, a little girl picks up a glove and learns that her sport and her dreams are just as important as any boy's. We know that girls are twice as likely to drop out of sports as boys are. Why? Because they too often face barriers that send subtle but powerful messages. They are not small issues. They shape how girls see themselves and what they believe they deserve. So what harm is there in making one of the three baseball fields shareable with a portable mound so everyone has fair access? None, but the good it would do, the message it would send, would be tremendous. If you look around this room tonight, you'll see so many St. Mary's college athletes who came to advocate for these young girls. Many of them may not speak at this podium, but their presence alone is loud. This is the number of people we were able to bring together after just one week of spreading the word across our campus. Imagine the impact of the entire Lafayette community and surrounding cities if they knew about this. The support would be overwhelming because people care about fairness, opportunity, and doing what's right. So please be those people who stand up and fight for equal opportunity for the girls of Lafayette. Let's show them that equality is something we build, one field at a time, and one girl's dream at a time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Nancy and Erin Hu.
My name is Erin Hu, and I cede my tongue to Nancy Hu.
Aw, thank you.
Good evening, city council, city staff, and Lafayette families. I'm here tonight as a mom, volunteer, and a 14-year Lafayette resident who cares deeply about the community. Last year, my older son Aaron played for the Dodgers in AAA. One April evening at Chaney Field, he told me he wanted to try catching. I was nervous. He'd be catching for our flamethrower pitcher Luke. The kids would chant, "Luke hits nukes!" And he threw nukes, too. Aaron, small for 10, pulled on his catcher's gear, crouched behind the plate, gave a thumbs up. The first pitch came in fast, and in an instant, he was on the ground grabbing his knee. I remember the sound before the silence. The crowds inhale, then nothing. I ran from the bleachers as the ump called for a parent. Coaches helped him to the dugout. His face red and hot streaked from tears. Another parent sprinted to the snack shack for ice. I sat beside him on the bench. He whispered, "Mama, it hit me between the pads." When the game ended, I was debating how to get him to the car. Wheel him in our wagon? Another mom said, "You're not doing that. Honey, pick him up." Her husband scooped Aaron into his arms and carried him from Chaney to the parking lot. That night reminded me what Lafayette Little League is really about: Not trophies or standings, but community. Parents showing up for each other, helping a kid through a tough moment. Fast forward one year, same field, same kid, one cool May evening before championship weekend. Bases loaded, bottom of the last inning. We're up by one run. Aaron's behind the plate again. The pitcher, John, is shaking. Aaron calls, "Time out!", which little league catchers never do. He walks to the mound, calls the infield in. A huddle of small heads under a big sky. Then he crouches, gives the sign. John winds up, throws. Strike three, game over. The crowd explodes. That moment on Chaney Field, I watched my kid transform from the boy who once limped off that dime and crying to the one who calmed his teammates and led them to open. That's what these fields are for: Growth, resilience, confidence. And that's what I want girls to have, too. I'm thrilled Lafayette Little League is launching softball because softball at Chaney, grass or no grass, means access to scoreboards, batting cages, homerun fences, closed parking, the snack shack, and yes, even the ice the boys have had for 20 years. But most importantly, it means girls will have moments like Aaron's, when a kid discovers strength they didn't know they had. As we move forward, let's remember what truly makes Buckeye and Chaney special. It's the people, the kids, not teenagers playing high school ball, but kids ages 6 to 12 who learn confidence and teamwork. The parents who cheer and rake, the volunteers who keep these fields alive. Weekends at Buckeye often feel like a block party: music playing, hot dog sizzling, siblings chasing foul balls, grandparents in lawn chairs, neighbors catching up. But make no mistake, the grass at Chaney isn't just a playing surface. It's a symbol. It's living proof that Lafayette takes care of its kids and the places they play. Let's build on that, not tear it down. Softball in Chaney is a wonderful first step, but we can't stop there. Let's expand opportunities, build more fields, and create quality spaces for every child to play. And to do that, I urge the city to embrace Lafayette Little League as a partner. This league brings hundreds of volunteers ready to fundraise and build, side by side with the city. So please, say yes to Lafayette Little League softball proposal. Say yes to partnering with the league that's ready to do the work. And say yes to keeping Chaney Field... And say yes to keeping Chaney Field a place where all kids can grow, learn, and lead. And say yes to what makes Lafayette special: community, camaraderie, competition, and the simple joy of kids growing up together on our fields. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Dan Emerson, to be followed by Daniel Dietrich.
Dan Emerson, I cede my time to Dan Dietrich. So, Julian, that's good for four minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
You're going to need the overheads?
Yeah, if you could bring that first slide up, that'd be great. Thank you.
Perfect.
I'm Dan Dietrich, and I've had the pleasure of serving on both Lafayette Little League Board as well as CYO Board. I've also served here as a civic function as the Chair of the Finance Committee in 2008 for the City of Lafayette. I've lived here since 1973 off and on, and I had the opportunity tonight to talk a little bit about the history of Lafayette Little League. So as you see on the screen, what we're talking about is 100% volunteer organization, and the love and care and attention that's been put into these fields is all from volunteers. And just as a show of hands, how many of our Lafayette Little League parents, kids, friends, neighbors have spent time taking care of these fields? These are the nicest fields in our county, maybe some of the nicest fields in our state. And they're that way because of those people raising their hands and all the people that came before them. They're that way because in 2003, we built these fields with the help of that grant and this community and your city, our city. That field and those fields today have the blood, sweat, and tears of all these families on them. So when we talk about grass, it's not about equity. It's about some of that history. If you can go to the second slide, that'd be great. Thank you. Just as a quick reminder, and Vice Mayor Carl Andori was there in 2003 when we did all this and was a council member. That's a little piece from the vistas, which we still find so fun to read about, our Field of Dreams. And it follows all the way back to the time which that field was put together. Little League was actually started here in 1963. And as you can see, the field was put together in 2003 with a 10-year lease. That lease then came up, and that lease was started in 2004 to 2014. And then again, it was renewed again for 10 years. It was not an exclusive lease. It was a non-exclusive lease, for which we did have certainly a good bit of time. But I want to be clear, as those comments were made earlier, that that lease was an exclusive lease, which it was not. The history around this field and that time and effort was an opportunity that the community put in, as the previous president talked about, in making a difference for all of us and for all of our kids. That opportunity is right here before us today. If you go to the next slide, please. The proposal that will be talked about again through several other speakers and the things we've talked about tonight is an effort to come together as a community, as Mayor Candell has talked about. And the key item in all this appears to be the question of grass and whether or not an infield with grass is unsuitable for softball. I'd argue that many of our fields, as they sit today, are unsuitable for lots of things. And looking for college-level or professional-level as the benchmark of success may not be the thing that we can all adhere to. We'd all love to hit those standards, but compromise is part of life. And compromise is about creating as much opportunity as possible while still understanding the past to drive the energy of the future. That's the Little League World Series, softball World Series. That infield is grass. Last thing I'll say. How do we move forward? Join together, leave the grass at Chaney, improve upper community, raise the funds necessary to build out the sports fields across from Oakwood. The power of this community can be brought fully to the table if we work together, not against each other. This is not about AB 2404. It's not about softball versus baseball. It's not about LMYA versus Lafayette Little League. It's about seizing the opportunity put before us and finding a way to work together to improve Lafayette. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Adam Carmine, followed by Kat Lukach.
And our horde of kids here. My name is Adam Carmen. I am the new Lafayette Little League President. And since I've spoken with all the council members and mayor ad nauseam for the last month, I'd like to cede my time to our VP of Softball, Kat Lukach.
Good evening, council members. My name's Kat Lukach. I'm a Lafayette resident. I am a proud volunteer of Lafayette Little League, and professionally, I work in gender justice. When I moved here during the pandemic as a single mom to my son Memphis and my daughter Juniper, we didn't know anyone. And that first spring, I signed my son up for baseball, Little League. And we found so much more than a sports program. We found a community that became the backbone of our life, to no exaggeration. Coaches that don't just teach baseball, but believe in these kids. Help them build confidence, teamwork, and character. Families that show up to each other week after week. And that's what Lafayette Little League truly represents and the kind of family values that make our town so special. Lafayette Little League has always been about more than just baseball. It's about life lessons on and off the field, including what our kids are witnessing here tonight. As a mom of both a son and a daughter, I've seen the differences firsthand. My daughter loves softball. And when she played with LMYA, I even coached with Rachel. It was really fun, but it did not compare to the level of competitiveness, to the depth of community and camaraderie that my son got to experience through Lafayette Little League. And that's why, under new leadership, which I am so thrilled to have Adam Carmen as our new president, we have launched softball. And it's going to be an exciting chapter, and I know that it's going... It's just already infused with so much energy. Adam's already brought more women to the board and expanding access. At Lafayette Little League, we believe in an abundance mindset, that progress isn't about taking something away. It's about building more for everyone. The path to fairness isn't to destroy what already works. It's to create more fields, more access, and more opportunities for our kids. But what is happening now? Threat of litigation and the proposal to strip grass from Buckeye infields. It's doing the opposite. It's sowing division in our community and it's pitting parents and organizations against each other, and it's truly disheartening to see. It's a technical maneuver that seems to be disguised as advocacy. We're already seeing families leave LMYA, and we have a growing list of parents that are wanting to coach and volunteer in our softball program. Softball is played on grass infield all across the country, even at the highest level, as you saw, the 2025 World Series. A stripped field is not a strict requirement, and it's certainly not a symbol of equity, and it will not hold our girls back from playing softball. What stripping Chaney Field would actually do is damage our thriving community resource, which our league has so lovingly tended for for decades, with our own volunteers, our own money, and our own hands. Buckeye Complex isn't just dirt and grass. It's where our kids are growing up. It's where my son begs me to hang out after every day at school on a spring day. It's where my daughter can be caught in the outfield playing with her friends. That's... It's the rare sense of community that actually still exists. True fairness, true abundance, means investing in more quality fields and not stripping away what is already serving families so well. That's the Lafayette I believe in and I want to help continue to create. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? Yeah, wait one second. Yep.
Yeah, to the extent you're willing to do so, could you give a little more detail about what your plans are for Lafayette Little League softball?
Yeah, absolutely. So we've already launched registration. We have an instructional co-ed starting at five years, and then we have divisions up through 12-year-olds. Yeah, and Adam can add to this.
And we're following the model of Little League softball, which is thriving nationally and actually in Contra Costa County. So we'll be joining District Four, which already has eight softball leagues. And we plan to bring the exact same passion, community, camaraderie that we have for baseball to softball. So that's things like jamboree. That's things like the playoffs. That's things like All-Stars, where girls can compete against the best of the best from around this region. We will do interleague play, where we'll play against girls from Walnut Creek up to Benicia, over to Alameda. So what we have for boys, we will be bringing exactly to girls in softball and Lafayette Little League.
Okay. Did you say that registration is open now?
Yes, registration's open now for softball and for instructional, and we open boys' baseball registration on the second.
Okay, and for softball, what number are you planning on for?
We plan to get to 100 girls. That's our goal.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. So this is a good question. So you mentioned softball, we play on grass, which of course is not what we've heard from other speakers. And how does that... I mean, what we heard, I think, pretty convincingly is if the base paths are shorter, you know, like 50 feet, you don't really want to slow down the ball because you're just not going to have a very competitive game. How does that work with Little League softball if they're playing on grass infield?
Well, I mean, so it is not a strict requirement. It's strongly recommended. And we've been consulting the Little League Association, the organization, and they are going to help us work through that for these first couple of years. It's a very common kind of struggle that most leagues, as they first launch Little League softball, have to deal with. And so that's, you know, our long-term plans will involve something where there is, you know, turf that can be multi-use, but it is not a strict requirement, according to the Little League Association, that we will be, you know, relying on that infrastructure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? One second.
I just wanted to clarify, because I'm kind of getting off the learning curve on all this stuff. So the long-term plan for softball would be to have a turf infield? Is that the direction it would go in?
I mean, that's our long-term vision. We have...
Yeah, I would encourage to see our long-term vision. You can visit LafayetteLittleLeague.org, and you will see the page that we've developed for our proposal, which is immediate cash infusion to upgrade facilities. Now, while we build for a premier complex that's going to require fundraising, whether it's turf, whether it's dirt, whether it's grass, we have to have a collection of thought leaders and people that want to build in order to figure out what that ultimate plan looks like. We also have to come together, city, leagues, and the school districts. The school districts fields, which we play on, by the way, overwhelmingly. So we do play at Chaney and Buckeye, but most of our games and most of our practices for the 600 kids we have are on school fields, all of which are in disrepair. We would like to find ways to infuse that with cash and with the volunteer organization we have to make those more suitable from day one.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, follow-up question. We asked Rachel Leonard if LMYA would be satisfied with a turf field on the Chaney Field? And she said...
Infield.
Infield, yeah. And she said yes. What's the Little League position on turf for the infield at Chaney?
Same here. I've been a big advocate of turf overall for interoperability with sports, for environmental reasons, for long-term cost savings, for playability with rain and when it gets really hot. We ought to invest significantly in these types of fields for all of it. We have people will have... Talk about soccer. We have kids leave every single day to go play Magic Soccer in Wilder, every day. We have kids leave all the time to go play softball in Pleasanton and Martinez. We ought to keep kids here playing sports, and we owe it to them to build the fields for them.
Thank you.
Any questions? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speakers are Paige Williams, followed by Geeta Jacobson.
Could you announce your name again? I missed getting it when she announced it.
Yeah, my name is Paige Williams.
Thank you.
I'm 16 years old, and I'm a junior at Camp Lindo High School. And like everyone in this room, I am in full support of doing better for our girls in this community. I'm a scholar athlete. I played volleyball, ran cross-country, and I just came from flag football practice. But before any of that, I was and still am a ball player. I've been the captain of the Camp Lindo softball team since I was a freshman, and I have played at one of the biggest youth softball tournaments in the world against Olympic-caliber teams. But to build the skills that earned those achievements, I had to leave Lafayette. I started my softball journey with LMYA, and within two seasons, my family and I realized there was no room for growth within the organization, and we looked elsewhere for opportunities. Since then, I have played in San Ramon, Fremont, Concord, San Jose, Burlingame, and most recently, San Mateo. Safe to say, I own more jerseys than regular clothes, and my folks were ecstatic when I got my license. But if you do the math, three-hour car rides to San Mateo plus two-hour practices and a full school day don't add up well. I don't want to have to sacrifice softball or my education, and neither should any girl have to. I'm a proud product of LMYA, and I am now proudly getting involved with Little League to start building a softball program from the ground up. Adults disagree about what to do with the Buckeye fields, but I'm less concerned with that and more focused on the unique opportunity we have in front of us. Lafayette has only been halfway in on giving girls like me opportunities to play elite softball and grow their skills to the highest level, something I only accomplished because I left. If this town wants softball, it must be all the way in, the same way it built water polo and swimming through its incredible aquatic facilities, the same way it's been all the way in for baseball. Lafayette Little League is trying to do the same thing: build a softball league. This begins by making Lafayette's existing softball facilities excellent and continues by building additional Tier One softball fields. Upper Comm is the obvious choice to expand and improve upon. I'll try and wrap it up. But there are other locations the city may choose to focus on. More important than snack shacks, fields, or fancy scoreboards, our softball athletes need to know they can be amazing, and they have access to the resources that will get them there. Regardless of the outcome of whether you choose option one or not, we need to let our girls know that we are in support of growing their sports. That is why I partnered with Lafayette Little League to build a program that's been missing from this city for decades. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? No, thank you.
Geeta Jacobson, to be followed by Benjamin Ginsburg.
Hello, everybody. I'm a Lafayette resident, a mom of a daughter and a son, and I run a design-build firm right here in town. So my entire world is about building things in Lafayette. In construction, we always focus on our clients' needs, and we always build for long-term. And that's exactly what you guys have the opportunity to decide here tonight. The truth is, this conversation didn't have to reach this point. Lafayette Little League has already agreed and even offered to fund the conversion of Chaney Field into a shared playable space for all ballplayers. We're all in agreement on that. But the convertible Chaney Field is fine as a temporary step, but that should have never been the end goal. It's just a quick fix, and as anyone who's ever remodeled knows, quick fixes never work. The effort, time, and money could instead go toward creating what this community actually needs, and what everybody has brought up, by the way: a dedicated softball home for girls. A place built specifically for them, not a convertible field. Our daughters deserve more than a shared or convertible field. They deserve a field built with their game in mind. Yes, it's going to take time, but that's not a reason to avoid doing the right thing. Even a kitchen remodel takes six months if you do it right. Great things take planning, teamwork, and patience, and Lafayette has all the right tools. We have parents who show up, maybe a few too many, businesses who love to sponsor, like mine, and a community that cares deeply about kids, which we see here tonight. Let's make Lafayette known for having the best baseball and softball fields in the area, a true destination for all ballplayers. Let's focus on building for the future. Let a lasting plan that shows how much this community values every kid. Let's build it right. Let's build it together, and it will last for generations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Benjamin Ginsburg, to be followed by Kim Powell.
Yeah, I think Chris Kelly should be up next, and I'm going to cede my time to Ben Ginsburg.
Y'all set? All right.
Hello, my name is Ben Ginsberg, and I'm a Lafayette resident with one fifth-grade son that has played LMYA soccer and basketball and who has also played baseball with Lafayette Little League. My son's days of playing a Chaney Field are over. I'm here because I can agree on the one thing all of us here can agree on, that Lafayette's girls deserve better fields, but they also deserve a better organization. I've coached multiple seasons for both LMYA and Lafayette Little League, where I coached a kick-ass girl, by the way. The LMYA and Lafayette Little League experiences could hardly be more different. LMYA provides a bare-bones experience with no sense of broader camaraderie and doesn't go above and beyond in any meaningful way. The organization is spread too thin across multiple sports, such as they aren't particularly good at anything. Make no mistake about it, LMYA has failed my son and several other Lafayette children over the past few years. For example, my son just finished his LMYA soccer season on Saturday, and his teams have won exactly one game combined over the last two years. After his winless season last year, several of the kids on his team quit soccer because of how miserable the season was. After winning one game this year, I bet some kids won't play again, and I'd be shocked if my son wants to play again. LMYA has killed his interest in soccer because they placed practically zero effort to ensure teams are balanced and competitive, unlike Lafayette Little League. In the hopes of talking about how teams can be made more fair and the experience for kids elevated, I emailed LMYA one month ago mentioning my son played soccer and asked if the soccer director had time to chat. I've yet to receive a response. Some other recent examples. How about the Jacobson family, who coached girls volleyball and had to practice in gyms with no nets? How about the Holder family and others that had to watch their first graders consistently play basketball on standard 10-foot hoops, even though LMYA had promised to lower all hoops to eight feet every game, meaning no one scored any points during games because the kids couldn't shoot that high, and kids walked away each game crying? These are honest-to-goodness examples of the sports experience that LMYA provides Lafayette's kids. Can they be trusted to organize their parents to prep the fields, collect the trash, and run the snack shack? LMYA either doesn't care enough or doesn't know how to go above and beyond to ensure kids have a positive experience. I read every single letter submitted to the city council, and I want to summarize some telling data. Of the 67 non-lawyer letters submitted by Lafayette residents, 53, or 79%, supported Lafayette Little League's approach, while 14 supported LMYA. More importantly, of the 28 letters where people specifically mentioned personal experience with both Lafayette Little League and LMYA, exactly one single person supported LMYA. Think about that, one out of 28. Those who know both organizations know what they're each about and know who's going to do a better job. In conclusion, I'd like to implore the city council to think long-term and not jump for a superficial quick fix that will do nothing to solve the core issues. Please show leadership that this situation demands. If you want to truly maximize the long-term happiness and opportunities for Lafayette's young softball players, including the brave ones who spoke here tonight, you will work with Lafayette Little League to build something greater. I donate money for a new softball field, even though I don't have any daughters. The community will come together for a goal like this. And to all the LMYA softball families here, I beseech you to sign up for Lafayette Little League this coming season. Join the multitude who have already made that switch, and your daughters will thank you. I personally guarantee you that they will do a better job building something special for your daughters than LMYA ever has or ever will.
Our next speaker is Rob Seg, followed by Mike Lederman.
Thank you, council members. My name is Rob Seg, and I'm speaking on behalf of both myself and my wife, who submitted a letter to the council. I'm going to read from portions of her letter, since she couldn't be here tonight. I'm a longtime resident, Lafayette resident, raising two kids in the public schools, who also play in Lafayette Little League. I grew up in Lafayette, also played for Lafayette Little League, and we both own our own local businesses. Needless to say, we have strong ties and dedication to this community. Our kids have played multiple sports in years in both Little League and LMYA. I've coached both of their teams several times throughout the years for both organizations. Little League offers an unparalleled experience. I have no doubt the softball experience will be just as remarkable thanks to the volunteers. The experience of my kids playing sports for LMYA and Little League are simply not comparable. LMYA does not provide this, provide the same product or experience. Little League is successful because of the dedication of the parent volunteers and funds provided by the parents to maintain the fields. A big part of this experience is the field quality and safety. When my kids played soccer with LMYA, the same level of care and attention was not evident. My kids moved to Eclipse Soccer, where we shuttle them back and forth to Wilder multiple days a week, offering a much better field experience similar to that of Little League. We have emailed Parks and Rec about this before, trying to understand what needs to happen to offer the same quality of fields here, and why it would be better for our community to invest in long-term field improvement solutions, making more quality fields available rather than Lafayette residents going back and forth to Wilder and Arinda, which offers turf fields and therefore isn't routinely impacted by weather. Parks and Recreation has an opportunity to create a long-term solution for our community and kids to have access to quality, safe fields, and drive more desire for neighboring cities to play at Lafayette hosted events, which lead to more revenue for the city of Lafayette. These are all huge wins for our community if we collaborate together now for the best long-term solution. Thanks.
Mike Lederman to be followed by Mark Jacobson.
Good evening. My name is Mike Lederman. I'm going to talk fast to get through this quickly. I've lived in Lafayette for 18 years. I have three kids, and I've been coaching in Lafayette Little League for the past 11 years. Plan to do so for another two until my youngest age is out. I've had the honor of managing the Summer All-Star Tournament teams from 2022 to 2024, which included playing games at Little League fields across Northern California, as well as hosting games at the Buckeye Complex against teams from other cities and districts. I always enjoyed seeing the faces of players, coaches, and parents when they arrived at Buckeye for the first time. They were in awe with their mouths open and their jaws dropped, the beauty of Buckeye. And that beauty is not just due to the grass infield. Frankly, in my opinion, it's more due to the care and the upkeep that Lafayette Little League has taken to ensure these fields are the envy of every other Little League. When we traveled to other fields for games, my players would typically sigh and groan as they got to a field with the dirt infield, given they were wired to expect that it would be like Upper Comm, which has not enjoyed the same level of care that the Buckeye Complex has. As the city chose not to renew Lafayette Little League's lease at Buckeye, should we assume that the user groups, as the PTR director stated on October 14th, will just work it out? Or will the city take care of Chaney the way the city has taken care of Upper Comm? Lafayette Little League spends about $25,000 per year out of its budget to care for these fields. Where is this money coming from going forward? Who will contract with Pacheco Landscaping to ensure that the Buckeye Complex does not suffer the same fate as the other city-owned fields in Lafayette? If Lafayette Little League is not caring for these fields in the same manner, which frankly, I don't expect them to if the grass infield is removed. Did the city council think about these items prior to making the decision that was made on October 14th? And are you considering all of this tonight with this upcoming decision? Lafayette Little League is a volunteer-run organization in which every single family plays a role in running this league. We are not-for-profit, we do not have employees. In my professional world, a prospective customer that makes unreasonable demands is typically someone that will turn into an actual customer to make unreasonable demands. But a prospective customer that understands that a relationship is a two-way street usually results in a strong partnership. Lafayette Little League has been a phenomenal partner to the city for many years. This includes the $30,000 proposal on wrapping it up at Upper Comm to make the Upper Comm softball the envy of every softball team to come play at these fields as well, just like Buckeye has done for baseball. This is in contrast to the competing proposal that involves attorneys and litigation. We can all agree that the Buckeye Complex is what we want our fields to be. Don't fix what isn't broken, fix what is broken at Upper Comm. Thank you.
Mark Jacobson will be followed by Ben Tishen.
Good evening. My name is Mark Jacobson. I'm a Lafayette parent who's coached both my sons' Lafayette Little League baseball teams and my daughter's LMYA soccer teams. And as you've heard tonight, I can confirm, these organizations are run very differently. I'm also a serial entrepreneur, and I've served on boards advancing gender equity in technology. I don't believe, I don't just believe in equal opportunity. I've actually helped build it. But tonight, I want to reframe the conversation. This isn't about grass versus dirt, or softball versus baseball. It's about what standard of investment our kids deserve. In my world, there's something called MVP, a minimum viable product. It's the simplest version of something that barely works. The minimum you can do and still call it done. That's LMYA's proposal. It shifts access without building anything new, without expanding capacity, and without a funding plan. It's redistribution, not investment. Lafayette Little League's proposal is the opposite. It's a real plan with both short and long-term impact, immediate cash to upgrade upper community park, and a longer-term solution. A phased path to build a premier softball complex that girls can truly call their own. Not shared access, but real ownership. And let's clear up a myth. LMYA and the spirited but misinformed LMYA supporters claim Lafayette Little League's plan makes girls wait four years. That's false. Chaney is open for softball. We've heard that maybe even LMYA families are thinking about shifting. That speaks volumes about which organization families trust to build a better experience. So when I call LMYA's proposal minimum viable, it's not just a metaphor, it's reality. Families are voting with their feet. I've coached both leagues, I've seen what true community building looks like. Lafayette families don't just maintain the fields, they spent 20 years building excellence. Our daughters deserve their own first-class facility. Our sons deserve to keep what generations built. And our community deserves leaders who choose vision over expedience. Thank you.
Thank you. One more second question. We have a question for you, hon.
Let me just ask you, you said that under the Little League plan, softball would have access to Chaney Field. You mean Chaney Field with grass infield, correct?
It's open for registration. The league is going to get kicked off next year, I think.
No, 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 I'm asking if that, the vision, you're saying it's open under the Little League proposal, Chaney is open for softball. And I'm just asking, is that softball with a grass infield or a skinned infield?
I'm not defining the plan. What I am saying is that there is an immediate opportunity to solve what is being asked for today, to allow girls to play softball immediately.
On a grass infield?
To push for a better plan.
On a grass infield?
And to simply argue over, over grass.
But you're saying it would be on a grass infield at Chaney Field?
We'll support turf, we'll support women playing, period. That's, that's the Lafayette Little League stance, unequivocally. Unequivocally, it is supportive of girls playing softball.
Okay, thank you.
Ben Tishman to be followed by Frankie Hammond.
Thank you. My grandfather would love to have one more volatile name, it's just Tishon, we only got one A in there. So mayor and council members, thank you for this opportunity. Also want to commend the young women and men from St. Mary's for your sisterhood and your brotherhood, for you to stand together tonight. It's really reflective of how strong your teams are, and that's why you performed so well. So thank you for being here. I stand at a couple capacities. I'm a 16-year resident here. Both of my kids have played in Little League as well as in LMYA. I'm also the etho-director for the St. Perpetual CYO. And for those who may know, the St. Perpetual CYO program is the largest CYO program in Oakland Diocese. Women's sports is at the top of our priority. We are squarely focused on making sure our girls have every opportunity. And while I am, it's very clear to me that the council has a very simple decision to make tonight, and it's finding ways to fund a solution here that is not skinning a field, but putting on a turf field. There's $135,000 for synthetic dandelions in the budget. I'm sure we can find for synthetic grass in the budget.
We knew that was coming. I guess we knew that was coming, yes.
I can't believe it took that long. But what I really want to emphasize actually to the council and to the Parks and Recs Department is that this is actually a clear opportunity to refocus and really start thinking about what we're doing with youth sports in this community. We are completely under-resourced. You've heard people talk about Arinda, Pleasant Hill, San Ramon, Danville. No one's actually talked about Maraga. They might be the only place that's not as well-resourced as those other communities. And LMYA does use those facilities, and I don't see them in front of their city council right now with the St. Mary's softball team asking them for it. I also expect to be standing here in hopefully short order with the parish of St. Perpetual asking for your support to build a gym at some point in St. Perpetual, and I'm sure the NIMBYs will be out in full support against it. But what that shows to me is that we need a sports commission in this town that will look at youth sports and opportunities to develop youth sports. I hope you guys will consider commissioning that and organizing a sports commission to look at our facilities and make sure that we're doing future development. We are allocating and requiring, requiring development of sports facilities for all sports, boys and girls in this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Frankie Hammond to be followed by Liz Chaney.
Hello, my name is Frankie Hamudi. I'm currently one of the assistant coaches at St. Mary's. I was fortunate enough to win a gold medal with Team USA, go to the World Series with Oregon State, and play professionally for Athletes Unlimited, which is the league now partnering with the MLB, not in which I played on a grass infield. I'm here to express my strong support for a greater gender equality in sports programs within Lafayette. Access to sports and recreational opportunities is not only a matter of fairness, but is vital, a vital part of the community health, youth development, and social progress. Despite advances over the years, many local athletic programs, including St. Mary's, still shows disparities in funding facilities, access, equipment, and media attention between boys and girls sports. These inequalities send a harmful message to our young athletes, particularly, particularly girls and gender diverse youth, suggesting that their efforts and achievements are less valued. Research consistently shows that participation in sports helps young people build confidence, leadership skills, and lifelong habits of physical and mental wellness. When girls and young women have equal access to these opportunities, entire communities benefit from improvement of public health to stronger academic outcomes and more exclusive civic engagement. Lafayette has an opportunity to lead by example. Ensure equitable funding for girls' sports programs, fairness scheduling, fairness of scheduling, fairness of scheduling of fields and facilities, and visible support for female athletes can make a tangible difference. By doing so, we will uphold the principles of fairness and equality that I hope the city stands for. I respectfully urge the city council to review the current sports funding and resource allocation policies regarding the Buckeye fields, and I take proactive steps to guarantee gender equality in all community athletic programs. This investment in equality will yield benefits that extend for beyond the playing field. Thank you for your time. And I do fear that the, the whole problem here is actually that we're waiting for Little League to do this big grand old thing, but we'll never actually see the grand old project. So, thank you.
Yeah, all right, can we keep the clapping down, guys? I appreciate the, remember the quiet clapping? Yeah, thank you.
Hi, I'm Liz Chaney, wife and widow of Matt Chaney, and I'm here with my son Dylan Chaney. I think the issue is patience. Little League is a fine organization. LMYA covers a lot of ground in terms of multiple sports. I don't need to talk to that, but it is 2025. Are we seriously talking about equity still? That aside, Matt Chaney, in 2008, the city decided to honor Matt Chaney while he was alive for his volunteer, his activism, his volunteerism, his activism, and for his philosophy of sports. Matt played Little League, he coached Lafayette Little League. Our boys played and umpired. Matt was a board member. We are, were and are a Little League family, and we also played in LMYA. Matt's philosophy, and it is our family's philosophy, kids of all ages, genders, ethnicity, and all levels of talent should be able to play so that they have that, that learning how to be a team, and they learn how, you know, all the social constructs. There is no question. Chaney Field should be open 2026 to girls, period. Don't care how it's done. If you have to throw a little more money to get turf, get the turf. If you can throw money for budget overruns for art, and I'm an architect and I appreciate art, this is a passionate thing. We should not be tearing up the community around this, around this. And then we have some exciting news.
First, I just want to say, I grew up playing on that field. My dad and I put in lots of volunteer hours. I've chalked the lines, I mowed the grass, I. I've chalked the lines, I mowed the grass, I cleaned the bathrooms, I worked at the snack shack. I played on the field when it was only dirt on the minor field. When you talk about history, blood, sweat, and tears, I've put the effort into that, that field. I have a daughter that's going to be born in about a week. I want my legacy to be inclusion, equity, and playing on a field that hones your skills for your sport. I, oh yeah, I gotta, I gotta wrap it up, yeah. I think we should have a dirt infield for girls. Siri agrees with me.
On top of that, I just want to point out that this is the only named field. And so to honor Matt's legacy for inclusion of all children, we should get this going. And there is a patience issue, and this will be an evolving thing. We may spend some bad money, you know, good money after bad, or bad money after good, just to get there. And I think we can get there. In Lafayette, we can solve anything. I have seen all kinds of things get solved here. But we do need to do it now. There is no reason for any girl to have to wait, period.
I'd love for my daughter, I'd love for my daughter to play on the field that was named after her grandfather.
Next speakers, and then the last two speakers for persons in the community hall. Joe Dordery followed by Ted Pilecki.
Good evening, city council. My name is Joe Dordery, 20-year Lafayette resident, Lafayette Little League board member and coach, LMYA board member and coach. This is tough for me because my two daughters missed this opportunity. They played Lafayette Little League, and it turned out it wasn't for them. They went to LMYA softball, but they'll never get to play on Chaney like their brothers. So that's one thing for me that's very sad. The other thing I would like to talk to is that LMYA is a great organization for rec sports. So to have another user group defame them publicly like this really hurts me. We're all here for youth sports. So, as I said, when, I'm a Parks Commissioner. We did a 7-0-2 abstention vote on this topic right here for you. The two abstentions were because they wanted to hear what the city attorney said. You heard what the city attorney said. So that again is a nine of decision by your Parks Commission, and it was their purview. If you look at the Oaklans Unified High School District, every school has this equal amount of baseball and softball fields. Why does not Lafayette Parks and Rec? If you look at Pleasant Hill, seven softball fields and zero baseball fields. All their baseball plays on the same field as softball players. San Ramon, five baseball fields, 10 softball fields, a two-to-one ratio. We've heard one person today say softball plays on a grass infield. Everyone else, softball is not played on a grass infield. I don't know why this is such a struggle issue for Lafayette right here. I understand Lafayette Little League is a great organization, and so I was part of it. This is about being right, and I hope we're right. The other thing I would like to say is there were some disparaging comments made about the PTR on this, and I'd like to address those, that this commission has looked over 300 sites in the city of Lafayette. Boots on the ground, we've looked at every single site. There's less than a handful that we can actually say are eligible for sports fields. This commission has also been looking at this, as I said, for the last 20 years. This is not a new problem, as Jonathan said. We are trying our best. We did measure L, we had a field, and it was turned down by the voters. I implore you, please do the right thing tonight for the girls in Lafayette.
Any questions?
Ted Pilecki followed by Ken Chow. If there are other persons in the community hall who wish to speak, please turn in a yellow speaker slip now.
First off, let me say that my love for baseball is for my mother, not my father. My dad couldn't hit a thing. She played softball, she played San Lob baseball in Chicago back when girls didn't have any opportunities. So I fully support the providing equity, equitable fields for girls in the community. But LMYA's approach to this has been unnecessary, unethical, and deeply damaging to the city and the reputation of the city. LMYA stands for Lafayette Maraga Youth Organization. The only reason we're here today is because the way that the state wrote the rule was that a individual city cannot, has to provide equitable opportunities. But LMYA is a multi-city organization, whereas Lafayette Little League is not. We don't have the opportunity to go play at JM, to go play at Wilder, right? So they, there's been multiple years where LMYA had the opportunity to make something out of those fields, and they passed on that opportunity, they didn't take it. The other thing that's totally disingenuous about the way that they frame this argument is that they get one access, access to one field over four. Well, one of the four fields is a 90-foot baseball field. So are we saying, based on, on their interpretation of the law, that no city can have a 90-foot baseball field because it could never be converted for softball? Could never play softball in it, right? So we're really talking about three fields here, not four. So their logic on that just makes no sense. You know, there are six softball-ready fields at JM, four at Wilder. Upper Community really needs more investment. They had an opportunity to do that last year when they finally got access to that field, and they didn't do it. And what I heard earlier about how many games were played there, the math makes no sense. I was involved in scheduling how many games Lafayette Little League played on the field, and I know that field was vacant a lot of the days and a lot of the weekends. So I don't understand how we get 30-minute practices. That sounds like an organizational problem to me.
Can you wrap up?
Yeah, so, you know, the other thing I'll point out, and one of the reasons I'm so passionate about this is we didn't go to the press and plant articles and try to bury another organization.
Can we, let's try to keep this focused. Thank you, though.
Yeah. So Lafayette Little League stayed at the table as we've done all these years, right? Trying to offer real solutions that are going to solve a problem, not have a temporary fix, right? The No Fair Play Act-
Will you please wrap up?
Yeah.
Your two minutes are done.
There has never been a case of the No Fair Act leading to a baseball field being converted. Every single case led to a compromise, and that's what we need to do here. We need to find a compromise.
Ken Chow.
Hi, thank you for the time. I know it's been late, and I didn't plan on talking, but I felt like I felt the need to want to kind of bring some perspective. First, my perspective is, I mean, we're talking about kids. When we talk about kids, we're talking about kindergarteners, pre-kindergarteners, maybe up to sixth grade. And I would want to add something that that gentleman said before is we talked about we have four fields that are baseball or softball playing, only one in three baseball. I would have to mention there's a misconception of that because that, there's one that's like a big boy or big, big kid ball, it's adult field. Little kids are not going to play in that field ever. They never play in that field. It's really two fields in Chaney and Buckeye, and then that are Upper Community. So we have like a problem of odd, the odd number. Because if you convert, in the sense, right now we have one softball-compatible field and two baseball. In a sense, for the lawyer, is that a problem now? We're going to completely demolish, in a sense, a baseball. So it's really one baseball field and maybe two that are more softball. And if someone mentioned here, you're right, development's important, I respect the development. Softball, you guys talk about being very specific, you got to have specific fields for softball. I respect it, but I could give you some, I would ask for some empathy. My boy played baseball starting at four years old, and you're one of the coaches that started out. They played in fields that was not, never baseball-specific. There were no mound. If you want to be very specific with baseball, they have to have mound. We'd never have mounds ever except these two fields, in a sense. And then the portable ones, they're not really real. So if you're talking about the importance of player development, the kids in Lafayette has never really had a lot of opportunity for player development except these two fields. So I'm only asking, would they're willing to compromise to take out a mound, which is important for pitcher development? But if we're talking about just like a field or grass or not, we're not going to have any, we're not going to solve that going my way. I'm sorry, maybe you're not going to get one or the other, but we already kind of have a problem with the odd. Is, are people going to sit because now we're going to have two-to-one baseball field? This is, or the state's going to-
Thank you.
I don't know.
Can you wrap, can you wrap up, please?
Thank you so much, I would think we would for thought.
Thank you. Actually, I have a question for Jonathan. This question about four fields versus three fields, can you explain? Because I, I see one on lower community, I see the two at Buckeye, and I see one at Upper Comm. That, to me, says four.
So it's not about the number of fields, and it, it kind of is about the number of fields in that it is actually about the number of participants. So while it is for older youth, it is still a field that is only utilized by youth players. So all the male baseball players that are benefiting from lower community count in the total of male participants that are playing right now. So it won't impact those lower ages, but it does count for that overall count of players. So that's why the data in the staff report is all participant counts. And so right now, lower field and the way that it's configured and the way that it's allocated, it's only young male players that are utilizing that field. So any, any changes to Buckeye and having now two and two fields and ones made available, we have an opportunity through allocation to allocate time to move towards that 50-50 allocation that we would need to provide a more equal number of opportunities for, for youth. It doesn't have to happen through facility, but it's really what we're aiming for in participant count.
Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker is Kevin Ranahan. Once again, if you want to speak and you're in the community hall, give me a speaker slip now.
Hello, hello, everybody. I'm glad to hear everybody wants to have the best solution here for the kids. I had a, the opportunity to coach in both LMYA softball last year and in Lafayette Little League AB on the field that you guys are talking about right now, which is a big-boy field. I would like to point out just really quick, I don't want to keep anybody here, the Dodger game is still going on. The field at AB would not be used for Little League, but the field at Chaney would be used for girls at that dimension of 60-foot bases through, it's college, right? That's how long they stay on these fields. So I just want to point out that that field, while we're talking about equality on, you know, that kind of makes up for the three fields, four field, one field, two field, all that stuff. So 60-foot bases is the dimensions that they play softball on all the way through college. I just wanted to make that point while we're all over here still at, you know, this long and everything. I appreciate it, I just wanted to make sure that everybody's on the same page. It's about the kids, right? We're all agreeing on that. It's about creating quality baseball, softball for both organizations. And then Chaney Field, especially right now, it is only being used for baseball, and it has the opportunity to open for both boys and girls to participate on that field. Chaney Field is beautiful. Buckeye is beautiful, but the experience that the kids get at that field is different than any other field anywhere in this community, and nobody would argue with that. Nobody's going to stay late at Stanley, nobody's going to stay late at Lower Comm, Upper Comm. No way, nobody wants to drop off there, early, late, none of that. Buckeye Field is special, and the girls deserve that special field also, regardless of the organization. Thank you.
Thank you. One second, one second, you have a question? One second, go ahead, no, it's okay.
I'm going to reveal my naiety on this. You're helpful in clarifying something for me. So your, the point is the 60-foot base paths apply for Upper Comm and the Buckeye and Chaney Fields.
Correct, yeah.
Which work for softball all the way through?
All the way through college, right? And how, how far are the fences in college usually? Are they about the same? So yeah, about the same.
Okay. And for Little League, but for younger kids, I gather? Because it does the larger field at lower community, which should be for older players.
Correct, right. Yeah, the, the lower community has 80-foot and 90-foot. Both of those base paths are possible on that field. They move home plate up, home plate back for, depending on the age, the age range.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, we're moving- We're moving to speakers in our-
And how many do we have?
We only have two.
Okay, good.
So our first speaker is Peter Martinez Fons, to be followed by Heather Anderson.
Good evening, council members. My name's Peter Martinez Fons. It's almost poetic that earlier tonight, the same council approved spending $135,000 of taxpayer money to install metal weeds near BART, but somehow we can't find a way to fund more real, real grass or dirt or turf for our kids. Mayor Candell, I know you said that you tried, but once again, a lack of leadership and planning has forced this city into a terrible choice. For 20 years, families, volunteers, and local businesses have poured time and money into making Buckeye a top-tier complex that reflects the city's pride in youth sports. The city has had two decades to prepare for the end of the Little League lease, to plan for equitable field access, and to invest in new facilities. You did none of it. And now, because of that inaction, the city's answer is to tear up one of its best fields and pretend that that's equity. That's not, that's not fairness, that is failure. True equity means building something excellent for softball and for baseball. But instead of doing the hard work of planning and fundraising, the city chose the easy, cheap, and decisive route, a quick fix that satisfies no one and erodes public trust. Buckeye fields are a symbol of what Lafayette can build when residents take initiative because City Hall rarely does. Residents no longer trust that this council makes decisions strategically. You're about to make a decision that weakens trust in every decision that follows it. You don't restore trust by bulldozing it. If you vote yes tonight, you're voting to cover up years of your own poor planning with a cosmetic fix. This council ought to be ashamed of playing on its back foot yet again instead of showing the foresight and courage that this community deserves.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. This is Peter Anderson. I've had the pleasure of having my kids participating in both the Little League baseball and LMYA softball programs, and both are truly top-notch. Today, we're trying to answer two questions. Should the city provide more access to softball-capable facilities? And if so, how? We have a legal and moral imperative to provide equal access to field sports for both genders. And today, the city is due to lack of facilities and having to compete with boys' programs on the facilities that they do have. Given the above, we really need to provide more access to the softball fields. And honestly, I don't think at this point that question or answer are all that controversial. Now, adopting the PTR Commission's well-thought-out recommendation to return Chaney to a dirt infield satisfies this need. Unfortunately, only removing the permanent mound does not, since competitive softball cannot use a grass infield. And honestly, I was a little shocked to hear that the Little League World Series was played on a grass infield. To me, this really underscores the existing inequality, or even at the very top of their game, these women are playing on non-competitive surfaces. Conversely, the converted field can still be used for baseball. So at no accessibility cost for our great baseball programs, we can provide the level of parity our girls' softball deserves. And let me double down on this point because tonight I've heard some opposition to returning the dirt infield, but no, I didn't hear any actual reasoning or rationale behind this. Converting Chaney to a multi-use field is purely a win-win. Why is this change controversial at all? Let's do the right thing and let women compete.
Thank you. Are we really done? Is that it?
Mayor Candell, I have no additional speakers at this-
Okay, so we, I, we typically take a break every two hours, and it's been three and a quarter. And so we're going to take like a five-minute break here. Thank you. Thank you. So, no more questions? Okay, alright, so, oh, you have a question?
Okay, I do have a question. So, Jonathan, I'd heard some comment about a question of what was the plan for maintenance of fields if there is multiple user groups using them?
So, maintenance of fields will, for the city, stay likely the same. There was reference to contracting with Pacheco in one of the public comments. We actually use the same contractor. We went out and got competitive bids to do the maintenance at the fields. The contractor the Lafayette Little League was already using is who we now use for contract care of the facilities at Community Park and at Buckeye Fields. Lafayette Little League pays additional funds. While they are volunteer-run, don't have any employees. They do have a contractor that does maintenance at all four, or sorry, all three of the grass infields. It was all four when they had those infields before. And they also have the parent volunteers do work at those fields. So, the prep, care, maintenance that goes into the fields at Buckeye and at Community Park, they are paying Pacheco to work on Lafayette Community Park lower field as well as both fields at Buckeye right now. So, it will be up to Lafayette Little League how they continue that on their grass infields and moving forward. That's additional care that they pay for to maintain a higher level of service that they're looking at at those facilities. We'll also continue to work with parent volunteers from either group to continue to maintain those fields. Any maintenance troubles that are happening at Lafayette Community Park upper field? We have to remember Lafayette Little League is the primary user at that field. Any field prep work that goes into those games currently and before, when we had those grass infields, was still Lafayette Little League were the primary stewards from a parent-volunteer standpoint. So, any of the quality of those fields is reflective of our care as well as the parents and their input at those fields as well.
Okay, alright, Vice Mayor?
Follow up on that, because I thought I heard one of the speakers who was speaking in favor of the Little League proposal saying that the $25,000 that was being spent now by Little League would go away and asking how the city was planning to replace that. Did I misunderstand?
I can't speak for how they will contribute funds to the fields based on council's decisions. That will be up to that user group. I did have a conversation with the president of Lafayette Little League to make sure that they were aware that the way that the fees were going to work and as they're monitoring their funds right now. Buckeye, based on the lease, is billed after the season. They have not, we're still waiting on a PG&E bill to put together that final invoice for all of the Buckeye use. So, Lafayette Little League, based on the hourly allocations and their billing for Buckeye, are going to have two bills come in very quickly here as well. So, I want to make sure that they and anybody on the board are aware that they do need funds to make sure that they have everything aligned for their upcoming season for both softball, that they've indicated that use, and for their Little League use. So, when they look at their available funds and how they're working with the city, that's something that they'll have to keep in mind as they move forward as well.
Okay, great. So, alright, so we have, if anybody has any thoughts and discussions on the directions that they believe they are going, feel free to share if you feel comfortable. Sure.
I just want to, well, thank you, everybody. It was, we read every letter that came in, and we listened to, obviously, to every speaker. And I guess I want to start with thanking everybody on, you know, I won't say both sides, but just on all perspectives on the issue. I think we've learned a lot. I've learned a lot just in the last four, six weeks that we've been involved in how special baseball and softball are. I do want to just think, I mean, I just want to kind of point out one thing, I think, because I know, I think some people speaking kind of in favor of the PTR's point were just like, well, it's just, you know, just a city field, just, you know, just skin it, and, you know, it's, why is it such a big deal? And I think it is important to note, I mean, I think the partnership that Little League has had with Buckeye Field is really special. And all the effort that Little League, and the reason it's so special is because of Little League's, all the volunteer work they've done with it. So, it's understandable that there's a lot of, I think, pride in that. And just changing it, even for the right reason, legal reasons, whatever, I mean, it is not, it is not, it's easy to understand why it actually, it's going to take, it's a hard thing to deal with, because you spend a lot of time on that field. It's not city contractors that put the grass in or maintain it. It's a lot of Little League. And so, I just want to acknowledge and appreciate what Little League has done on that field. It would not be what it is today without their contributions. So, I just want to start off with that before we have our deliberations. So, thank you.
Any other? Alright, Jim?
I'd like to echo that, because I mean, I try to take as good notes as I can. I clearly was learning things along the way as one of the speakers could tell me about the 60-foot delineation for base path. But I kind of think about this, there's like this immediate issue with respect to Chaney Field. There's this other bigger-picture issue out there that several folks have talked on, whether, and that's kind of beyond the scope of this agenda, I'd gather, whether it's a sports commission that someone raised or something else. But I think that, to me, is the thing we have to keep in front of us, whether, it's not really a topic today, but ought to be a topic in a future time, I would think. Because that's really, I think, where we try to best meet the needs of the broader community, softball players, baseball players, soccer players, the whole. So, I kind of don't want us to, like, in this discussion, lose track of that. We can't, I mean, that's not really what's on the agenda, so we can't really talk about it. But in my mind, that's like the North Star that we ought to be trying to steer ourselves to. And with respect to the immediate issue, which I guess, as I understand it, is the Parks, Trails, Recreation Committee approval of option one. I mean, that's really whether we affirm that or not.
Correct.
And, you know, I've kind of tried to digest all this as best I can. There's a couple of things, one of which is I hear from the speakers who talked about providing access to a field for girls playing softball, where they can have a field that is consistent with what they would be playing on as they move on to high school or into college or whatever, that that playing experience matters. I get that. So, I think that that, to me, is like, it's important, I think, to affirm that as a concept that we want to give those girls access to a playing experience that they would benefit from if they pursue that sport and that endeavor later on. You know, the background is the Fair Play Act. I can appreciate council's concerns about that. I share them too. But I think, to me, what maybe, kind of Trump said, it's just having a, providing the right kind of experience for the girls who are playing their sport in a way that they'll be playing if they move on to high school or college, that they can get better at that. So, it's a tough one to me. But I kind of think that, to me, is something I think is important. As we, you know, I don't want us to lose track of like the bigger picture of how do we enhance the experience overall. But to me, the immediate one is dealing with that of, you know, what do we do with this particular ball field? And the decision made by Parks, Trails, and Recreation, whether we affirm that or overturn it. I kind of think they made the right call on this, honestly.
Vice Mayor?
Okay, well, I'll start with the, following up on what John said about Lafayette Little League. It's obviously an incredible organization in our community, larger than life, really, in terms of the impact it's had on the community and the number of families that have been involved. So, all of us owe a lot to Lafayette Little League in terms of the contribution it's made to knitting the community together and providing an outstanding experience. So, whatever we decide tonight, it doesn't take away from that. And I hope that we'll, you know, whatever happens, we will continue to work together, because Lafayette Little League has been a great partner. I think everyone can agree, following up on what Jim said, all the speakers would like to see a future where we have a facility for softball that's equivalent to the facility we have now for baseball, that's custom-built for softball, because there will be differences if we build a softball facility. But that's got to be our goal. So, if we decide tonight that we need to make a change in Chaney Field, I know this isn't on the agenda, but I would say that one, when we have the softball facility, we restore the Chaney Field to what it is now. We have a baseball facility. At least, that's what I see us doing. So, I see whatever we decide on Chaney Field this evening is only an interim solution, because the long-term solution has to be equivalent facilities and ideally, the kind of regionally-special facility that we have for baseball, that we have for softball. That should be our goal. The problem is, as you heard from Mr. Doherty, Park Trail and Recreation, it's not that they haven't been aware that this is a problem, they have been aware. It's not easy. We don't have the land, we don't, it's just not a simple solution. We've known that we've had to do this, it's just not easy. But we're going to have to double down on our efforts, I think, now. This has been a very educational experience. I feel very motivated now to, and I think all of us are, to make this happen. So, we're just going to have to put more into it. But the problem is, it's going to take time. And I empathize with the, you know, the girls have waited long enough. There's no question about that. So, where I come out on this, I know what Councilmember Simonti is, what you're saying about, it isn't the Fair Play Act alone, but it is the Fair Play Act. We have an obligation to the city, because we incur liabilities if we are not in compliance with the law. And... And uh, so it is important, uh, but more important, I agree, is just the spirit of providing equal opportunity. And that's something that that we need to do. So where I come out on this is support for the um, Park Trail and Recreation direction to the director. Uh, to um, make the change uh, to Chaney Field. But what I'd also like to see then is that we uh, put on an agenda for a council meeting as soon as possible, discussion of what we are going to do in a concrete way to develop uh, truly equal softball facilities uh, uh, in Lafayette. Um, and um, you know, and and also consider a, you know, maybe consider a time period by which we're going to do that. And also consider a commitment to uh, restore Chaney Field uh, by a certain time too. So that again, we have uh, premier facilities for both softball and for baseball. But I don't think we have an alternative actually, uh, other than to move forward with the the Park Trail and Recreation uh, recommendation. So I support that recommendation.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Dury. Um, I I concur. Um, I'm a parent of a school age kid at Akalani's High School. And I know how much parents contribute in time and money to augment facilities and programs for the good of all of our kids. And I really appreciate that. I appreciate Lafayette Little League. I appreciate LMYA and countless other organizations that are working for the benefit of our kids. Um, so I don't discount the the very long and substantial commitments um, and contributions that Little League has made. But I I feel the city is bound by the Fair Play Act, um, which mandates gender equity in our public, publicly owned facilities. Um, I'm concerned about compliance and I think, but it is more than that. Um, the city adopted a mission statement a couple of years ago. Councilmember Cervantes was Chair of the General Plan Advisory Committee and worked for a year, two years, a very long process. With a lot of community input in developing this mission statement. Um, and it it expresses a commitment to equity and inclusion. And across all aspects of our city. Um, and I think I think that that's important here as well. Um, I think we're fortunate to have fields that provide what what seems like equivalent high school, college level experience for boys' baseball. Um, and that we, including the park amenities also, we should also have parity um, for for softball players, I believe. Um, and so I I don't think that that a change to Chaney Field precludes us from going forward with a a softball complex. Planning program and searching for funds. I would hope that there are some state funds that are available. Um, and that we could put our best, our best application in and hope that we're competitive. Um, but also just use the resources of our community, the creativity um, to try to get to that, to that endpoint. But but I do think that at this point, we have to provide for the for the girls and the softball.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so um, I guess I'm gonna echo um, Vice Mayor and Dury's and uh, Councilmember, what it's been saying. I don't feel like we have much of a choice as far as the compliance. Um, we we need to be compliant and we need to provide access. But I am incredibly motivated to to echo Vice Man Dury's uh, a point to um, uh, to see if we can resolve this. It should never come to this, right? I mean, I think Lafayette, Little League has done such a good job maintaining the field or whatever. It kind of like, we were just to counsel out other things to worry about. We're worried about the housing element, worry about all sorts of things. And um, we, it's just unfortunate that it actually has to come. We don't have time to kind of work through everything properly like we need to do. We need to be compliant because there is a demand and um, we're not, we need to be. But I implore LMYA to, you know, be good steward of the fields like Little League is, Little League is and was. And I implore Little League to work with us to um, make this, you know, find a real solution. I, it is unfortunate that we're having to make change with with such a little time involved, but um, I really um, hope we can all work together to uh, to find a true solution over the next few years.
Great. So thank you, everybody who's been involved with this. Um, as a city, as local government entities here. It's impossible to give everybody everything they want and especially absolutely right now. City governments are set up like that. We can't do things like that. And the times when Lafayette has been really successful over the years is when we have strong partnerships with entities like LMYA and Little League and others. And we build together to make something great. And we did it before with with Buckeye Fields. We're doing it right now with the Bart Station. I know it, that's a like a $5 million project. We put in a very small piece. I know it seems like big tonight, but um, everybody else is putting in a lot. We're putting in very little. Um, and we're also doing a partnership with uh, Sunflower Hill and Saha to build 48 units of affordable housing down on 949 Mar- Maraga Road for developmentally disabled adults. These are the partnerships that we create when we do great things in Lafayette. And so I was hoping that we wouldn't have to come here tonight and 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 have a disagreement. I was hoping we could get here without having to have a disagreement, but but we do. But I am really, really hoping that it won't ruin the goodwill of everybody in this room to be able to do what we we can do. It is when we have great partnerships is when we grow and when we build great things. Um, I only support this if we have a timeline like uh, Vice Mayor and Dury has said in order to convert back. Um, I think that is a smart tactic in order to put the pressure on all of us to do everything we possibly can to make something happen. Make something happen in the direction that we want. And so eh, this is a very tough decision for me. Cause I really didn't want to ever have to come to this point. Um, and I'm, and that makes me frustrated. But uh, I I sure hope that we can build past this um, with all the players that are in this room. And so can I get a motion?
Just.
Yeah.
One other thing to add to the agenda of this, the future meeting. Um, I, during the break, I asked the director uh, if if it was possible to do turf uh, at the start of the 2026 season, the answer is is no, most likely.
Not at the beginning of this season.
Not for the 2026 season. Yeah, the next upcoming season. We wouldn't be able to do it.
Not this season.
Yeah, but um, I think that's something we should consider for 2027.
We should.
That that puts us in our budget cycle and we can.
Right.
We can consider that. So just put that on the table.
And that would be.
And with that, I'll move that we affirm the Park Trail and Recreation direction to the Director of Park Trails and Recreation.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you, everybody. And so we're gonna get it on the budget. You're gonna have us another meeting where we discuss how we move forward to get to these goals. But thank you, everybody, so much, so much. All right, you guys, we have a meeting. We have a meeting to continue. So if you could continue the frivolities outside, that would be terrific. Hey, thank you, Adam. Thank you. All right, all right, please, people, can you please make your way out of the room? Thank you. And close the door when you go. Or stick around for items removed from consent. I'm kidding, joking. All right. Thank you, guys. Made it through. All right. Do we have any council member reports? You're not, okay. Bye, thank you. Yeah, can you please close the door? I imagine there'll be people in the hall and good luck next year. All right, you guys, keep going. Thank you. All right, John. They're cute.
That is, that is adorable. Um.
Here we are.
This, this is like a normal council meeting now.
Normal council meeting, yeah.
Great. Uh, just if we're talking about uh, things that we've done, I just want to shout out two things. Um, one is for the chamber events. I know many of us participated in both the res run and trick or treat street. Uh, we're phenomenal, phenomenally successful events, well attended, I believe. Still over a thousand kids uh, marching up and down downtown streets in costume and getting candies and uh, meeting all the the um, uh, the residents or the businesses. So it was, it was a very, very good event and it's one of the highlights. Um, second thing I want to just, just to shout out. Um, my wife Carly and I participated uh, with the Lafayette Literati this week, weekend. First time we have done it. What an amazing group that they um, they meet every other Saturday morning, eight thirty to ten underneath the Overpass on Pleasant Hill Road, Highway 24. And we had, must have had 15, 20 people there, maybe more. And um, it's uh, and they 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 kind of split up and just take care of all the trash. And there were just a dozen full garbage bags and they do this every two weeks. It's it's just incredible. So I just cannot highly recommend. If you want just the best feel-good start to your weekend, just go out there. They're great with rookies. They're great with experienced people. So I just can't, cannot recommend it enough. And uh, again, one more thing that makes America's uh, Maria Lafayette very special.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yeah.
Can we invite them to come and present their work?
We absolutely should. I don't know if they, I don't know if they will. It was just a thing, you know, it was a couple that they started during COVID and it kind of ballooned. But we absolutely, it would be a great way, I think, to get them more.
A little presentation.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah, I think that one of their leaders came to um, ETF a couple of weeks ago, month ago or so, and talked about their work. And I just thought, wow, more people should know about this.
Yeah.
Yeah, great.
I could just give an update.
Sure.
So I attended with Councilmember McCormick, the Recycle Smart Board Meeting last month or week, sorry. It feels like a long time ago, um, last week. And um, interesting things, I guess, that were reported where they did a big old trash survey. Um, kind of like a census to see what we're putting into which bin and then also what's the cons, what what are the components of our of our landfill bin? So they categorized it by 60 different types of garbage and people had to do that work. Um, I think it took a while. And one of the big finds, I think, was that um, we're doing really well with putting our green um, yard waste into our green bin. But we're just not getting there on getting our food scraps into that green bin. So that is something um, that they're hoping that people will will improve on. Um, and they're gonna be working on some campaigns for that. So yeah, you can take your kitchen food scraps. You can put them in your green bin, not into your, into your black garbage bin, landfill bin. Um, the other thing I wanted to report on was that they um, I think it was Recycle Smart held or yeah, yeah, tell me if I'm misstating, but that they held or co-sponsored a recycle repair cafe that was held here a couple of weeks ago. And it was with um, I think Sustainable Contra Costa. I know some sustainable Lafayette folks were here repairing bikes. Um, and it was just a fantastic event where they bring together people who are kind of like fix-it people for all kinds of things. And members of the public are invited. You bring your, I think, one thing per person and you get paired up with someone who might be able to fix it for you on the, on the spot. And it was just really cool to see. This whole room was full of tables. This was the sewing area. The jewelry area was over there. There were some lamp people over and like, there was just a lot going on. And it was just super cool. And the idea is to, you know, reuse, recycle. If you don't, if something could just be fixed and still has life, why not keep it going? Um, so it was just a really amazing event. I I was really, really happy to to come and visit. I actually brought a little broken um, tote bag that they took care of for me. So that was great. Um, and then last report, I guess I didn't go, but I just have to give a shout out to our youth commission who put together the haunted house. But really the spooky walk um, this weekend. Unfortunately, they got rained out on Saturday, um, or Sunday. Losing track of time here. Yeah, they got rained out on Sunday, but I heard that that Saturday was was really good, that they had a lot of people. Um, I know that these kids put in a huge amount of work leading up to it. And um, I heard they want to invite the council next year. Okay. So they do, yeah, not so scary and then very scary, but I'll I'll go to not so scary with someone.
Go the not so scary one. All right, embarrassed?
Yeah, real quick.
Yeah.
So uh, yesterday in mid-the-rain, um, Springer Valley homeowners had this annual picnic.
Yes.
Mayor and I were there, trying to help out. Uh, the fire engine from uh, Confire came from our our station here, Station 15. Uh, lots of kids playing in the, not playing, but observe, checking out the the fire engine, uh, which left with applause from the neighborhood, which I thought was really very special. Great event. Uh, the the rain kind of put a little bit of a damper on it, maybe, because it got rather chilly, but uh, really a nice community event. Uh, part of what I think makes things special here.
Yes.
Reading the minutes, I see that the city manager announced last meeting that the mural was scheduled to start today at 2:00. And I don't know if it got rained out or if it, they, they did start. Okay, so the the idea is they're going to aim to finish it by November 15th. So watch that space.
Absolutely. All right, so a couple of things. First is I went to that that fire roundtable with Senator Grayson. And it was big. It was out of the county thing. Um, Senator Grayson has idea to um, get one big ask from, and this includes like Richmond and parts of Berkeley and stuff like that too, um, one big ask for our area and make it a trailer bill. So it doesn't get attached. So it gets attached to the budget and not, doesn't get discussed in committees and everything like that. And he thinks if we do this right. And so thank goodness, we've got a nice low fire season right now with all this rain. And so we've got all of our resources able to really, you know, vet a nice big ask. And it sounds like Chief Bachman and Andy's working on it as well. So that's pretty exciting. Um, and then um, we had a chair of a commission come with a um, an idea and saying that you know how we do one, two or three renewals of commissioners without any question, basically? Um, their idea is to check in with the chair every two years, possibly. So change that. And if the chair has any, you know, it is gonna be super rare, right? It gives, we probably ought to check in with the chairs at the two-year boundaries. And if they've got some grave concerns, then we can think about having an interview. So is that something that you guys would be interested in looking to as a policy change?
You would want to put that.
On a future agenda. I'm trying to get some nods. I'm trying to get.
Of whether people want to put it on.
Want to put it on an agenda item or not? And I don't.
Yes, I would, I would like to put that on a future agenda. I would like to put on that same agenda, adopting a policy mandating rotation of commission committee task force leadership.
Oh, the chairs.
That's right. I was actually gonna suggest that as well. I think we've, I think that we're a little stagnant. So I think that might be an interesting thing to talk about. Maybe there could be a little package of potential improvements that maybe we can kind of.
Okay, but yeah, let's do it like, don't take it too, don't make it a huge overhaul, but if we've got a couple of good ideas.
Yeah, well, the other part that fits in, we did have months ago, um, public speakers who asked us to develop policies for uh, interviewing uh, potential new commissioners and when we do it. And I think we sort of semi-committed to doing that. I would not make that part of this.
Little changes.
I just want to raise that, that that's something I think we should do at some point.
It's good, yeah. Yeah, standardization, yeah.
Awesome.
I think also maybe doing some investigation, thinking about onboarding and procedures for that consistently.
Part of the bigger discussion, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Part of a bigger discussion, yeah.
Yeah, there's some history to that that we can look into. That's, yeah.
And then another piece that if we're thinking about doing this, um, this was from Elliot Hudson. And he, you know, he was so a big part of our mission statement. And he goes, we, he goes, I don't see it anywhere. And he, and he's especially going to these objective design standards, like even the staffer and, you know, they don't really know that we have this miss, this mission statement and our contractor doesn't know we have this mission statement. Um, and so it's not part of their lens, you know, as they're moving forward for things like this. And so his thought was like, we should. this. And so his thought was like, we should get a little more, you know, we should put it in, you know, at least a commissioner should know about it. Our staff should know about it. Because we bring a lot of staff in too, right? And, and, and make sure that everybody understands what it is and, and is trying to fulfill that. And we can change it if we don't like it, but it's, it is what it is. Part of training, I guess. All right, so that's it.
This year's city coffee mug, the mission statement.
Why, that'd be so cute, actually. Why not? Yeah. All right. And then next thing is the email from the American Lung Screener Initiative working, proclamation recognizing November 2025 as Lung Cancer Awareness Month. And this is the proclamation. So do I have a motion? Any public comment?
Mayor Candell, I have no public comment on this item.
Okay. So do I have a?
I'll move.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And then we have the email from Ken McCormick resigning from the Crime Prevention Commission. So, so do we want to say anything?
Nope, except with regrets. You know, again, he's a good, a good guy, but no, unfortunately, won't be on the Crime Prevention Commission anymore. So we'll be looking for another great person to fill, fill that role.
Great. So thank you, everybody. And thank you, Ken, for your service. All right, and now we will adjourn. Okay.